Good evening. Time being six o'clock, I call the July 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order.
Recording in progress.
Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Announcements from the chair. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel Nine and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast Channel Nine and Verizon Channel 29 for those who miss the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using the Zoom webinar ID 835-11922487, and then you need to hit the pound sign. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. I do think we have a couple of upcoming events. And Franklin's 250th Anniversary Celebration Committee has officially launched. Community members interested in applying for a seat on the committee can apply on the town website. Councilor Frangello has just joined our meeting. Franklin Farmers Market is taking place this Friday, July 25th, on the Town Common. Stop by for Fridays from 2:00 to 6:00, running June through October. Concerts on the Common will also be taking place Friday, July 25th, on the Town Common. There will be two performances this Friday. The first performance will be from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., followed by a second performance from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. The 2025 Arts and Culture Symposium will be held on September 18th and 19th at the Black Box. This will be a dynamic cross-sector event designed for artists, creative entrepreneurs, small business owners, and community organizers. For more information, please visit the town website. Okay, further announcements from the chair. Town Clerk Nancy Donello, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. I'm Nancy Donello, your Town Clerk. It's election season, and I am here tonight to notify the Board and the residents of Franklin of the upcoming biennial town election. The election date is Tuesday, November 4th, at the Franklin High School, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The following seats are available. Board of Assessor, one seat. Board of Health, one seat. Planning Board, two seats. Planning Board Associate Member, one seat. School Committee, seven seats. Town Clerk, one seat. Town Council, nine seats. If you're interested in running for any of the available positions, nomination papers will be available in the Town Clerk's office beginning on August 4th, by appointment only. You must be a registered voter and a resident of Franklin in order to run for an elected position in Franklin. Please contact my office at 508-520-4900 or email N'Donello@franklinma.gov to discuss any questions that you may have. The following are some important dates to remember, and I'll be back just to remind everybody of these dates.
We're sure of it.
So Monday, August 4th, again, nomination papers will be available by appointment only in the Town Clerk's office. Please check our website for ours. September 15th, by 4:00, signed nomination papers must be submitted to the Town Clerk's office for certification. September 22nd, by 4:00, is the last day to withdraw your candidacy. And then October 25th, which is a Saturday, will be the last day to register to vote, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the Town Clerk's office. And that will be by appointment as well. And you can always register online at www.sec.state dot m a dot u s. And I will be hosting in-person early voting here in the Clerk's office, and those dates and times will be determined at a later date. And I'll be updating the citizens of Franklin again here at every meeting up until the election, and also on the town's website, The Observer, and of course, with Mr. Sherlock. So I will see you again. Thank you.
We look forward to it, Nance. Okay, last announcement from the chair. I want to thank Councilor Hamblin and Councilor Delarco, who are both on vacation, who drove up from the Cape so that Councilor Jones didn't have to make every vote tonight a roll call vote. So, thank you.
You got an extra day of vacation.
I was close.
Okay, next item on the agenda, citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda, in compliance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the open meeting law. The council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The Town Council may ask the Town Administrator to review the matter, and nothing herein shall prevent the Town Administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. So with that, is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward, name and address.
Bob Kaufman, Forco Hasitway. Everybody, I assume, is aware that a donation was made by John Schmidt for $2,600 to cover the salary for a year of our wellness nurse, Trish Colatus. And the decision on whether or not to accept that, I believe, is going to be made next month, but I want to have the opportunity to give my view on the situation. Unfortunately, it's become very political, and I'm trying to take a non-political view of the thing. As people may know, I'm on the Council on Aging, and I look at it in a very simplified manner, and that is what's best for the elderly to walk through the front door of the senior center and what's in their best interest. We have had the luxury of having Trish in for two days a week, and she's able to help the people who are able to come to the senior center. And beyond just taking blood pressure and checking for glucose, she has been immensely helpful with people who are afraid to go to the doctor or don't know, you know, the older you get, the less time you have with it. I get the bum's rush from most of my doctors, 15 minutes if I'm lucky. So she helps them put a list of questions together. The only way I can express it is she goes so far beyond her job description that I can't even begin to cover it all. We also have the benefit of having the Health Department nurse in our building. Now, I don't know if everybody knows what Alicia does other than she's an RN. She does, when she's out in the field, what Trish does in-house. She visits the people that can't get to the senior center. So they're doing the same exact thing, but in two different venues. So together, that's a pretty powerful team. Alicia and I have had several conversations. She was able to get permission from her boss to fill in one day a week, so she's going to be there on Thursdays. But there's a lot of us who feel we need Trish back, so we've got three days a week, plus the fact there's any health crisis, Alicia's out the door. Her job is not to sit around and take blood pressure. So I want people to just, I want the board to please keep that in mind. I'm going to be speaking again next month, just so you know. Had a wonderful meeting with, John and I met with Jamie yesterday, and there's been a letter submitted to the council from the Council on Aging.
Finish up. Finish up, the three minutes is up.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I was the one descending vote, so it was six to one. Steve Sherlock has agreed to interview me on the radio. I can't address the letter in three minutes, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, I'm Emily Ambrose. I'm a teacher at Remington Middle School, soon to be Franklin Middle School. I do have a quick question about the timing. I have three separate topics, but I only have three minutes. So I was wondering, should I like get down and come back up, try to smoosh everything all together? So next month, I am excited to tell you about how awesome Ryan Jettie and the Parks and Rec Department are, but the priority tonight is our school resource officers and also my request to continue your expansion or goal around communication and engagement in Franklin. So I want to give you some examples of how the failed override will impact our school. So here are some concrete examples, and I'm doing this to ensure that you know that our school resource officers are a worthwhile investment and that you can give residents concrete examples of what happens when departments are not properly funded. Our SROs have been cut from three and a half positions to one and a half positions. Over the past eight years, all students and staff have benefited from having a consistent and positive police presence in our schools. What you may not know is that beyond just safety, that students with some of our highest needs who are or who are at the highest risk benefit the most from our SROs and our K-9 units. So here's some, so what it looks like day-to-day that I get to and some of my fellow teachers get to witness. Being able to have Dave Gove and Frankie at arrival and dismissal is what got some of our students to come into school and also to get them to stay in their classes and get through the day. I am not exaggerating on this. It was a tremendous benefit, and because they were there, our other related service providers could assist other students. For the civics project, which you are probably aware, in the eighth and 10th graders have their civics project, another benefit of having our SROs is that they could talk to students about their civics projects. So they, some of these students were interested in things like gun control or things like how to decrease teen drug use, and having them readily available with someone they know was a tremendous impact on us and a help for the teachers as well. Also, the day-to-day things like supporting us around truancy issues and getting kids into classes and into school was a big help. There are other more abstract things that you might not think about, and those are things like having positive interactions with a police officer on a consistent basis, where some students see the opposite of that in the news or in social media. You can't put your finger on that, that's not something that you can put on paper, but it's there. Having a female officer as a role model for our young ladies to say that this is not something you can do, it's just something that happens, that's another abstract and amazing thing that we benefited from. So all of these beneficial outcomes were the result of a smart investment, and I'm hoping that you would support that if funds were to come back. So.
Thank you.
Three minutes, so close. I got most of it.
Well done.
There's more, I think. We talked about this for hours ago. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that, please, name and address, please?
David Doherty, 147 Dean Avenue. Teaching in Franklin since 99. This will be my first September, I won't be returning. But seen a lot of changes in the last 25 years, we all have. I'll speak to the same point that Emily did. If there's money someplace to get the resource officers back. Many people understand or believe on an athletic field that the official's number-one job is to enforce the rules, but it's not. It's not. It's safety. Same thing with schools. Yes, we're educating our kids, but safety is absolutely it. And we're just about to drop almost 60% of our staff with that. Pulling up and seeing a police officer's car there, see the vehicle, sets a tone. It's a deterrent for escalating behaviors. We've seen those over the years with the young kids and also national tragedies, that it's huge, absolutely huge. And so, just to mention that particular piece of it that Emily didn't touch upon, she was going for a different angle, but absolutely, if there's ever a way to get some sort of money to fund part of that along the way, we'd ask that you move forward with that as quick as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, please, come forward? Name and address, please.
Hi, Karen Miller, 246 Washington Street. Appreciate all you guys do for volunteering here and listening, et cetera. And I walked from home, and I took the opportunity today because I figured it was going to be a large group here. And just the question that I always want to ask from home is, everything is center-focused on money, right? We need more money, we need more money. Why? For what reason? The population in Franklin has been stagnant. 2017, 2018, staying in the same range. And that statistic comes from our annual report. I did not look up anything on the internet, our annual report. And with the stagnant, we all know prices have changed and such, but you know, everything is, well, we're going to do that, but there's no money. Why is there no money? The pupil population has decreased. Population in the town is stagnant. We have new buildings, new revenue outside of residential. Not a ton, but some, right? There's been girls, right? And just not to belabor the point, but I just would like an understanding of with a stagnant population, a decrease in pupils, closing of multiple schools, why that is always the message this Town Council wants to send is, we need more money. And like I said, I totally appreciate everything, but everything you do, the volunteerism, everything, I just would like to understand, everything costs more, but we have been stagnant for so long, right? And the closing of the schools, in fact, and I'm not, I'm not saying I disagree, I just would like to understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? There's a few second delays, so that's, I don't see anybody, Amy, do you? Okay, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, and I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 4th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 18th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is proclamations, recognitions, and swearing in. We do have one this evening. Chief McGlaughlin, I think, is in the room. I don't think he's left the building yet.
Not yet. Almost.
Be nice.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Town Council. Tonight, we are very happy to introduce our newest member of our department, firefighter, paramedic, Jeffrey Walcott. Jeff, if you can step up there. We also want to make sure it is clear to everyone that tonight's appointment brings our staff into 59 firefighters once I leave, when I leave shortly. 59 is the staffing level approved by this council on June 4th for the amended FY '26 budget, so I just want to make sure that was clear to everybody, that this appointment tonight brings us to 59 for the current fiscal year. So is there any questions? I just want to make sure that was clear to everybody. Okay, back to what's more important, firefighter Walcott. Jeff lives in Dudley with his wife Michaela, who will be pinning his badge night, and his daughter Aspen, who is two years old. Jeffrey has 12 years experience of fire experience, 10 of which with the Charleston Fire Department. He also has 12 years of EMS experience with over six years as a paramedic. He is also a Mass Fire Academy instructor for the last five and a half years. He enjoys outdoor activities on his free time. We also want to mention that Jeffrey was the lead tech on July 10th for the delivery of a baby boy in the back of an ambulance en route to the hospital. We're happy to report that the mother and child are doing fine now.
I'm going to ask you to raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Jeffrey Walcott, do so and we swear to faithfully execute the duties as a firefighter and paramedic for the town of Franklin with respect, integrity, and excellence, and to uphold the mission of the department, the Constitution, statutes and regulations of the United States of America, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the charter and bylaws of the town of Franklin. So help me God.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is appointments, annual reappointments and new appointments of boards and committee members. Clerk will read the appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Always one of my favorite things to do. Committee appointments for July 23rd, 2025, and I apologize ahead of time for making any mistakes on names. The Town Administrator has appointed the following individuals to serve on town boards and committees with the terms effective July 23rd, 2025. I'm going to give you the name, the address, and the term to which they will expire. Agricultural Commission, three-year term, five members. Matthew Stalts of 2 Haverstock Road, to expire on June 30th, 2028. Marion Suzmensky of 529 Pleasant Street, June 30th, 2028. Board of Registarians, Kristen Manns, 18 Dover Circle, June 30th, 2028. Trouseret Pollution Control District, three-year term, three members. David Formato of 13 Town Line Road, June 30th, 2028. Conservation Commission, three-year term, seven members. Nicole Chieramonte of 8 Tanglewood Drive, June 30th, 2028. Michael Rain of 120 Eric Drive, June 30th, 2028. Council on Aging, three-year term, nine members. Faith Flaherty of 13 Glen Drive, June 30th, 2028. Phyllis Malcolm of 37 Uncas Ave, June 30th, 2028. Cultural District Committee, three-year term, seven members. John Lopresti of 109 Jefferson Road, June 30th, 2028. Pandora Calucci of 1 Tony Lane, June 30th, 2028. Cultural Council, three-year term. John Rosteno of 29 Washington Street, June 30th, 2026. Design Review Commission, three-year term, five members. This is a new full member, Priya Matarajan of 8 Mary Anne Drive, June 30th, 2028. Disability Commission, three-year term. Disability Commission, three-year term, seven members. Allison Ramey of 47 Summer Street, Department Number 1C, June 30th, 2028. Mary O'Neill of 102 Beaver Street, June 30th, 2028. Finance Committee, three-year term, nine members. John Barnes, new member of 141 Hillside Road, June 30th, 2028. Ryan LaVorgagna, new member, 58 Lennox Drive, June 30th, 2028. Shana Nealan, new member of 15 Russet Hill Road, June 30th, 2028. Historical Commission, three-year term, seven members. Janice Prentice of 126 Stoneridge Road, June 30th, 2028. Randy LaRosa of 298 Main Street, June 30th, 2028. Housing Authority, five-year term, five members. Jennifer Knight Levine of 555 Pond Street, June 30th, 2028. Library Board of Directors, three-year terms, five members. Allison Wallace of 53 Aquon Place, June 30th, 2028. Amanda Rabbit of 258 Lincoln Street, June 30th, 2028. Lead Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, one-year term, seven members. Christopher K. Feely of 5 Taft Drive, June 30th, 2026. Christopher Veriker of 63 Dean Ave, June 30th, 2026. Kimberly Mucho, of 4 Briwood Road, June 30th, 2026. Maxine Kinheart of 355 V Central Street, June 30th, 2026. Susan L. Eunis of 47 Stoneridge Road, June 30th, 2026. Norfolk County Advisory Board, one-year term, one member. Peter Peduler of 14 Fort Apache Drive, June 30th, 2026. And Recreation Advisory Board, three-year term, five members. Larry Pollard of 155 Summer Street, June 30th, 2028. And Mark Etcher of 34 Baron Road, June 30th, 2028. This is a motion to ratify the annual appointments to the following boards and commissions.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Jamie, anything?
Pretty straightforward, just the three new members on the Finance Committee, everything else, and there are some other seats. As you noticed in there, I think there's still about 10 seats that remain going through the process of appointment, and they'll be on the August agenda.
Any other... Counselor Chandler?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Just to one of the women of the citizens comments, this is towards the Finance Committee. Everything does revolve around the money, so you new appointees, please ask a lot of questions. It makes our life so much easier, and it really, it gets the budget meetings going quickly, and we can do a lot less questions, so I appreciate all your hard work on that. And lastly, there must have been some great applicants, because I know one woman did not make the cut, and I... She has impeccable... I can't even think of the word.
Credentials.
Thank you. Credentials. So I'm really excited for this Finance Committee coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, first off, I just want to thank everybody for volunteering their time to these very important positions. I really can't stress enough how this is the backbone to what makes this community... What really makes this community work is everyone's volunteerism. And seeing these names, seeing the new names is great, seeing the old names is great, you know, definitely always tend to see the same people stepping up to the plate. It's nice to see some new people joining the ranks. It's nice to see Councilman Peter Peduler on here. Is he here in the room tonight?
No. No, he's not here. He's been on it for a while.
I know. I was going to say. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to reading the remaining list that Jamie mentioned earlier.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco.
Couple things. Chris Philly doesn't live at 5 Taft Drive anymore, just to let you know.
He lives in the back corner of the room.
He lives...
He lives in Franklin, 17 Tuscany Drive.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted to change that, Chris, you know what I mean?
Tuscany Drive?
Tuscany.
Oh, Tuscany.
And I got the same phone call from the same lady that she... Her resume is at that... She should have got at least an interview. It's a shame.
Okay, any further...
Who?
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Public hearing. We have two this evening. The first public hearing, and I would declare the public hearing on new Section 12 restaurant all-alcoholic beverage license and approval for Xiaoshi Sheng as the manager at Kojo Asian Fusion LLC, doing business as Kojo, located at 28 East Central Street, Franklin 02038. And I would declare the public hearing open. Do you want to make an opening statement?
Yes, I could.
Please.
My name's Attorney Christopher Coleman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Zhao Zhang is here with me also, also goes as Nicole. We're talking about Kojo Asian Fusion LLC. The restaurant name is going to be Kojo. It's the same location, I think you're probably familiar with it, it was Hangtai prior to this. The location has 3,337 square feet, 72 seats are proposed. There's a floor plan that's been supplied with the application for your view. The cuisine will be Asian Fusion, which is a mixture of Chinese and Japanese as well. They're going to provide seafood, chicken, and beef dishes, as well as vegetable and sushi dishes as well. Sushi is going to be a large part of the menu, which I think that's also with your application, with the application. I'm told that the... I'm not a huge fan of it myself, but I heard the sushi chef is a real artist that's coming in, so hopefully you'll get a chance to see it. The proposed hours are Monday through Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Friday to Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. And on Sunday, it's 12 noon to 9:30 p.m. The proposed manager, like I said, is Nicole Zhang. She has good restaurant and alcohol experience. From 2010 to 2015, she was bartender at Karma Restaurant in Westford. And from 2024 to 2025, she's a bartender slash waitress at the Taco Group, and that's in Beverly. She's a U.S. citizen, she's been TIPS trained. All the servers or service people also receiving TIPS trained as well. TIPS training, probably have a trainer come to the restaurant, just take care of everybody. They're planning to have just a couple of televisions and maybe some background music, that's the extent of the entertainment that's going to be there. And they're planning on... It's difficult with contractors, but they're doing some renovations there, and they were planning on at the end of September, but it looks like it's going to get pushed to probably the first or second week in October, assuming everything is approved here. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Jamie, anything?
The only quick thing I would say is, we'll obviously hold on to the license, they have one more inspection to go through, because they're not ready to have that inspection. So both liquor licenses tonight will be obviously held like we usually do until those final inspections are done.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will go to the public first. Is there anyone in council chambers? Please come forward. Name and address.
My name is Maxwell Marangello. I live at 127 Central Park Terrace. I just had... First off, I'm grateful to see a space, that space being utilized downtown, and it's a great... I'm looking forward to seeing a restaurant there. I did have some questions. I think part of the, you know, alcohol permitting processes about public health and public safety, making sure we don't have drunk drivers on the road, making sure, you know, people aren't... Are using alcohol responsibly. So my first question through the chair, is the parking lot in behind that facility, does that allow for overnight parking?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Isn't that private back there?
I think it's a private lot.
It's a private lot, so...
Okay. My question is regards to, I know at least on the town side, if someone parks in front of the restaurant, and they have a drink, and they have a little bit too much, they can't drive home, and they risk getting towed. So I'm just worried, if someone gets into that situation, what should they do? Because there's no town policy or anything that really tells people what to do in that situation.
Call up. It has nothing to do with the license, but call a friend, take an Uber, take a Lyft.
But the car is going to get... My point is the car is going to get towed.
Send a friend after it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can communicate with police in that very rare circumstance about what's going on. I think the police would be amenable to the fact that they're not driving drunk. This doesn't have anything to do with the actual license transaction.
Okay. And the other question I have is, what steps, if the person is, you know, has a little bit too much to drink, what steps would... Are there any steps the applicant would take to make sure that they get home safely if they know they've been driven in?
It would be... We'd be calling the town, police. If there was a problem with somebody, yes.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that has a question or a comment on this public hearing, all-alcohol beverage license? Okay, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would... Has a comment or a question on this all-alcohol beverage license? Don't see any... I'll go to the council. Any counselors? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mel would probably agree with me that this is a great addition to helping with economic development for the downtown. We appreciate you taking on the task of approving that area and bringing in a new restaurant. It's really, it's a cool name. Kojo?
Kojo.
Kojo. Looking forward to it, just so happens to be a few blocks from my house. You're going to be in some stiff competition with some fairly good restaurants in the neighborhood, but with the train right there, with so much cool things that happen downtown, I think you're going to do well. Thank you for taking on this task. I look forward to the menu. Was it in our list? Did we get a copy of that?
Want to give us your best dishes?
What's your favorite? Yeah, what's your best dish?
My best inches?
Best dish.
Dish.
A dish. My favorite was sushi.
The sushi? My son will be all over that.
Very sharp.
So... Now, just one official question, however, though. Your five-year experience with working with alcohol, kind of to what I think what Max was getting to, is the TIPS training and just a clear understanding of the responsibilities that are associated with holding this kind of license? You're comfortable with that, as well as moving forth with training the staff correctly with that TIPS training?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Cormia Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to Franklin. Thank you for stepping up and taking over that space. I'm very excited. One thing your attorney friend said was that renovations were going on. That site very much needs a facelift, so I'm excited to see that happen. I didn't hear any mention of the steps you would take to encourage or serve the college kids from Dean. I know that that area is pretty heavily frequented with the dorm across the street, and do you have any plans for that population?
We discussed the possibility. It wouldn't really any different that it was strict ID checking. All the staff is going to be... Have education on that from TIPS. Any out-of-state licenses, you know, that's a problem. They'll be conservative.
Okay. I wasn't even necessarily alluding to the alcohol piece, just, you know, like, just being able to attract those kids to come into your establishment and eat there, I think, would be a welcome thing in that part of town, so best of luck. And my family and I will probably be one of your very first patrons, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormia Ledger. Any other counselors? The only thing I'll say is, having just returned, not quite in the same time zone right now, having just come back from China, that would really be good. It's beef smothered in hot peppers. Okay. Seeing no further questions or comments, I would declare the public hearing on new Section 12 restaurant alcohol, all-alcohol beverage license for Kojo Asian Fusion LLC, doing business as Kojo, closed. And we'll now go right to the license transaction, and we have license transaction 7A. And I would ask the clerk to read the license transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a new Section 12 restaurant license, all-alcoholic beverage license for Kojo Asian Fusion LLC, doing business as Kojo, on 28 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. Kojo Asian Fusion LLC, doing business as Kojo, is seeking approval for a new Section 12 restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license and approval of the licensed manager. You'll have to help me with this one. Jiuzhi Zhang?
Zhang.
Oh, wow. I see that. Nailed it. Issuance of license will be withheld until all departments have signed off on this application. Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to approve the request by Kojo Asian Fusion LLC, doing business as Kojo, for a new Section 12 restaurant all-alcoholic beverage license, and to approve Jiuzhi Zhang as the licensed manager.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is another public hearing on a license modification. Change of location of a Section 15 wine and malt beverage package store license, Little Shop of Olive Oils Incorporated, doing business as The Little Shop of Olive Oils, located at 5 Main Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. I would declare this public hearing open. They hear this evening.
He clapped, so that's why he's...
Well done. Would you like to make a statement?
We're just... We're moving all of 50 feet from unit number five to the main street, unit number nine. A little more exposure.
Sure.
Just a bigger space.
Great. Okay, with that, is there, again, as it's a public hearing, we go to the public first, is there anyone out in council chambers that would like to speak on this change of location license modification? I don't see anyone. Jamie, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, I'll go to the council... I'm sorry. We forgot Zoom land. Anyone out there in Zoom land would like to speak on this license modification, change Seeing none, I'll go to the council. Any questions or comments from the council?
Straightforward, just best of luck.
Seeing none, I don't see any further discussion, so I will declare the public hearing on the license modifications, change of location for a Section 15 wine and malt beverage store license, Little Shop of Olive Oils, closed. And we will go right to the license transaction, and clerk will read the license modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a license modification, change of location for The Little Shop of Olive Oils Incorporated, doing business as The Little Shop of Olive Oils, 5 Main Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. The Little Shop of Olive Oils Incorporated, doing business as The Little Shop of Olive Oils, is seeking approval for a change of location on their Section 15 wine and malt beverages package goods store license. The new location will be 9 Main Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. Issuance of license will be withheld until all departments have signed off on this application. Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to approve the request by The Little Shop of Horus Olive Oils, Inc., doing business as...
The Little Shop of Horus?
Oh, The Little Shop... I know, I got that word stuck in my head. Little Shop of Olive Oils, Inc.
Dress them up, but can't take them anywhere.
The Little Shop of Olive Oils, for a change of location to 9 Main Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. And we're going to put on a show called The Little Shop of Horus.
That emotion.
That was exactly...
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I'll be looking for the plants.
I'm going to vote no for the Little Shop of Horus.
Just clash a little, that's all. Okay, we'll move right on to legislation for action, which there is a significant amount this evening. So first item is resolution 25-27, FY 26, community preservation appropriation of funds, capital. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution 25-27. Fiscal year 26, community preservation appropriation of funds, capital, purpose to appropriate from community preservation reserves, available funds in the following amount, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for one community preservation project in fiscal year 2026, in the total amount of $102,45,000. The source is the Historic Preservation Reserve. The purpose is the Franklin United Methodist Church, in the total amount of $102,45,000. This is a motion being moved and voted by the town council that the sum of $102,45,000 be appropriated from the community preservation reserves in the amounts for the project indicated above in fiscal year 2026. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution 25-27.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Jamie?
So as a lead-in through you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sure at some point folks will have questions or comments from the town attorney. Representatives from the Methodist Church are coming up here now, Jake and Patricia, to give you some overview. They're going to make a short presentation, as they did at the Community Preservation Committee. So this is a rare expenditure request around the state. There are expenditure requests that have been asked previously from other communities to do exterior work, historic preservation work on places of worship. But I'm sure I don't need to editorialize to all of you the challenges between the ideas in the constitution and state law and a variety of other things about how a community feels about spending public dollars on a place of worship. There are examples, like in Easton, where this has gone forward, and the taxpayers of the town have not filed any sort of, of court case. There are also, in the packet tonight, I did cite a 2018 Supreme Court decision here in Massachusetts that revolved around the town of Acton. I hope everybody did have a chance to watch some of the Community Preservation Committee meeting. It was a really, really, really great discussion, very fascinating and very interesting. Ultimately, there's a three-factor litmus test, as these types of issues that surround religion, freedom of speech, obscenity, other very challenging issues, constitutional issues, these are not easy. They're very subjective. They depend on the community. They depend on the project. They depend on the circumstance. Unfortunately, as Mark will, I'm sure, illuminate at some point, this is not, there is no easy checkbox. You don't just go one, two, three, you're in or you're out. These issues are very subjective, and if you take a look at some of the materials I did put into the packet, will give folks, I think, a little bit more of a contextual matter about some of the challenges some communities have had on these issues, meanwhile, other communities have also certainly invested in historic preservation projects on churches and places of worship in their community that have had, obviously, wide support. Couple people have asked me, not on the council, but some members of the public say to me, well, why are we bringing this forward? Right? Why is this here? Can't we just figure it out at a staff level? Why do we have to go to CPC? Why is the council have to deal with this? There's a very important value of due process in this. It is not my decision to make and to determine whether this litmus test is, meets my standards. This is not up to the town staff. This is actually a community-wide decision. And there's a process in place for that. And the applicant has gone before the Community Preservation Committee. They did vote unanimously to recommend this project. In state law of community preservation, there's a process that we're following. I want to be very clear with all of you tonight. You cannot increase, not that they're asking, by the way, you cannot increase the funding level past the $102,45,000 amount. You can, under the law, reduce the amount that they are requesting, just so we're very clear, because we haven't been through this yet. At the fifth anniversary of CPA this fall, we haven't been through a question like this yet. So I'm going to stop there. I'm going to let the applicant make their case and do a short presentation that they also did at the Community Preservation Committee. And then, obviously, Mr. Chairman, we're available, myself and the attorney, for questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Jacob, just, if you'd just introduce yourselves, please.
I'm going to actually let Tricia go first.
Okay. So, hi, my name is Tricia Pruitt. I'm a town resident. I live at 17 Sunset Road. Thank you for your attention and for bringing us forward to this place. I am here on behalf of the Franklin United Methodist Church with an updated application for the Community Preservation Act funds in the amount of $102,45,000 for the preservation and restoration of the historic building that is located at 82 West Central Street in downtown Franklin, located next door to the Franklin Historical Museum. We presented our original application to the Community Preservation Committee back in 2024, and since that time, we have embarked on a journey involving additional historical research and revisions to ensure compliance with the rules governing the community preservation funds under the historic preservation category. We've had several meetings with town administration, with town council present, and on May 28th of 2025, appeared before the Community Preservation Committee with the revised CPA funding application. After much discussion, the application received a unanimous vote to move forward. This due diligence, I wanted to thank Alan Earls, who serves as the Chair of the Town of Franklin Historical Commission, and he has actually offered his personal perspective and support of the application. Most recently, you have a copy of that letter in addition to the rubric that I handed out. He could not attend this meeting tonight. It is actually, so you guys know, it's really been a lot of fun to actually delve into the deep dive of the building, to learn about the different architectural features, and to find out about the role that the building has played in the rich cultural history of the town of Franklin. With our 250th year anniversary coming up in 2028, Franklin has much to be proud of. Again, a special thanks to Rowan, our town archivist, Vicki Earls at the Franklin Public Library, and Alan Earls, who provided some materials from a private collection as we sought to learn more about the architecture and the history at 82 West Central Street. Did you know that Mario Capelli, a premier Italian-American tenor, performed at a service in the building in 1927? Original church ledgers and articles from the Franklin Sentinel have validated the continuous use of the building for the benefit of the community and its use for more than religious purposes for over 150 years. Should you choose to visit during workday hours, you will find Meals on Wheels actively using our building every single workday. Okay, why are we here? Based on our research and from the Community Preservation Coalition rubric, which you have in front of you, can we successfully answer these questions? Is the project appropriate for CPA funding? Is the building, for historic resources, is the building historic? Yes. Is the structure historic? Yes. Is the resource listed on a state register of historic places? Yes. The facility has been identified as a historic asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, MACRS inventory FRN 336. It has also been identified as a historic property by the Town of Franklin Historical Commission. The facility sits adjacent to and is a contemporary of the Dean Junior College, National College Historic District, reference number 75000285. Will the funds be spent on one of the following actions? Preservation of the resource? Yes. Restoration of the historic resource? Yes. Exterior only. The CPA funds may be appropriated for this project. I would like to introduce Pastor Jacob Junker, who's going to tell you more about the exterior and review some of the information that you already have in your packet.
So Jacob Junker, live on Union Street here in Franklin. I'm also the pastor of the church. I'm grateful you have not given me a three-minute timer. Chairman Mercer, members of the council, it's good to sit before you today. I've been before this council for other things, and it's good to sit before you for this project as we look to preserve and restore the historic Methodist Church here in Franklin. Over the last several years, building on its historic legacy, which I want to talk about here in just a bit, the Franklin UMC has made an intentional effort to become a place where the entire community can come to meet, serve, and share with neighbors. At another time, I'd love to sit down and share with you how the community at Franklin UMC is becoming a hub of community development, not in the sense that you often talk about it in terms of economic growth and dollars, but a place where neighbors can build relationships and express their shared love of this community through acts of sharing and service. In my seven years here in Franklin, I've heard a lot of mourning over the loss of the community that once was, and I believe the historic institutions of this town, like the Franklin UMC, have an important role to play in being not only an anchor to the past, but also building bridges to the future. We have an important role to play in helping longtime residents and newcomers experience build and strengthen the town of Franklin in such a way that it honors the past and looks boldly to the future. For 172 years, Methodists have gathered in the town of Franklin, first in the Franklin Town Hall, beginning in 1853, when it was relatively new, then in members' homes around Franklin, and finally in a facility that they would construct at 82 West Central Street, adjacent to the Franklin Town Hall where first they met. The cornerstone was laid in 1872. The Methodist Church in the heart of downtown Franklin is emblematic of, of our community's history, its architecture, and our shared memory. The Franklin UMC is requesting $102,45,000 in community preservation funds to restore the facility's, excuse me, historic exterior. This involves reviving the original Victorian Gothic features like ornate trim, repainting and/or staining with historically, historically appropriate colors, and reconstructing a period of accurate cupola and cresting that once crowned the roof, but was lost over time. Restoration and preservation of this historic structure is important. The Franklin UMC is one of the oldest religious institutions in the town of Franklin, and it is the oldest to still be in its original building, a building which has been recognized, as Tricia mentioned, by the Mass Historical Commission and the Local Historical Commission as a building of cultural and historical significance. Its Gothic structure with pointed arches, flying buttresses, and stained woodwork, stained glass windows and woodwork represents a unique architectural heritage. Restoration will ensure these details are preserved not just for aesthetics, but to maintain the integrity of Franklin's downtown landscape and arguably one of its oldest blocks. Over its 153-year history, the facility has served as a far broader purpose than for religious worship. It's been a political forum, cultural venue, and a community hub. Notably, it hosted early suffrage discussions in the 1880s and concerts supporting historically black colleges in the 1890s. Today, it continues to host events, concerts, and groups, providing space for Meals on Wheels, Girl Scouts of America, Rise Up, and the only Spanish immersion daycare and educational institution in the town of Franklin. All of these activities, programs, and opportunities enrich our community far beyond the congregation that meets there on Sunday morning. I do want to be very clear. This proposal focuses strictly on preserving the historic exterior of the facility. The church is running a separate capital improvement campaign entitled Defining Our Generation, which is restoring and renovating the building's interior, including making it more accessible and usable for every member of our community. Community preservation funds will not be used to preserve religious iconography, even the iconography that exists on the outside of the building. Any explicit religious symbols, most notably the cross on top of the building, will not be preserved or restored using public funds. Such, such restoration work will be done at the expense of the church and the church alone. No aid is being given to fund the religious operation and obligations of the church. Funds will, if approved, only be used to preserve and restore the exterior of the building, excluding the stained glass windows, which that was the hubbub about the Acton church, contributing to the public's experience of downtown Franklin. This proposal is unique, and so the discussion is well warranted, and Tricia and I are happy to answer any questions you might have. But this proposal is not just about a building. It's about preserving our shared history, enhancing and preserving the character of downtown Franklin, and honoring the spirit of a place that has welcomed, educated, and served generations of people in the town of Franklin. Your support helps protect an irreplaceable part of our town's story. I will say, just, I've talked well over my three minutes. I will say that, much like Tricia, diving into the history of the building has been fascinating, and we've been gathering new information as time has gone on. In fact, just a week and a half ago, I got a submission on the town's website from a guy in Porter Ranch, California, which, for anyone who manages a public website and you get a form submission, like, red flags are going off when you see things like this. But this guy had actually been on vacation in Lewiston, Maine, and picked up what is believed to be the architect's drawing of our facility. Which is the oldest photographic evidence we have of what the building looks like. And I'm happy to show, show you it. I've got copies for everybody, but it's just been absolutely incredible to watch and participate in this, and I'd be happy to, to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments? Councillor Sheridan?
Chair, through you, isn't this what the CPA, CPC's fault? Is this?
Excuse me?
Is this what, what that whole thing is for?
What do you mean?
Funding, preserving the store of buildings?
Yeah, the request from the, from the United Methodist Church is to do $100,000 and change worth of exterior renovation projects to the facade of the facility. That's right. I think they're raising more money to do a bunch of other stuff, but this, but these funds are for just the exterior.
Mark, did you want to add something?
Just a very brief overview, if you have any specific questions. However, the issue of the eligibility of community preservation act funding for the use of an active church building was the subject of a Supreme Judicial Court case here in Massachusetts. They laid out a guidance, what was permissible, what was not. That was given to you in the package. It was alluded to tonight, and in my opinion, having reviewed it, I think the request is legally defensible. It's limited to exterior work. The building, apart from its own uniqueness, is really summarized well in Alan Earl's analysis, which you were passed out, namely that it's in the middle of a historic area of the downtown, is being made to look as it should look historically, and that's really the, the most critical standard. It's limited to exterior work and of a secular nature, which is all permissible under the Supreme Judicial Court analysis.
And answer your question, Patrick. Councillor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair. I actually did watch the CPC meeting, and I spent a lot of time discussing their, their conclusions with one of the board members, who's actually a neighbor of mine, Jeff Livingstone. And so, you know, I, I talked to him a lot about, first of all, I'm like really excited that this is a proposal from not the town. This is totally, this is actually a private, private request, which hasn't come up yet, and I think that's really great. It's always been the town, and I, and I love the fact that you have this creativity to do this, and thank you for. this creativity to do this, and thank you for bringing that forward. The historic significance of this building, it's the oldest active parish in the structure, Massachusetts' historic asset. It's used by past and present Franklinites as a meeting place, education and entertainment center, as well as present-day Meals on Wheels creation for the community. I mean, and those kind of things, I think, proves how important it is to our downtown. It's only, the preservation agreement means that it's a permanent preservation, like, this is going to have to be there. It's what the community has been saying, that they want to keep that small-town feel, right? So this will help keep that small-town feel. It's, and it's, it's the only of the exterior of the building, and maintains the original Victorian Gothic details, and I think it passes the sniff test, I guess, is that what you call it? So I think this is a great use of some of the historic preservation funds.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Deloco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A hundred grand doesn't go that far.
We know.
You guys know. So, just, it is a big building, and it's an old building, and, you know, my father probably went there and did some acting there or something like that, and I know that he said that he used to go up there and used to have shows back in the 30s and stuff like that, so. But, so what's your plans for fundraising? That's just, I'm just kind of curious. I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea. I'm just hoping you guys can fundraise. That's what I'm trying to say.
So the proposal that we have before you is explicitly for the exterior?
Right.
The contractor came with us to the CPC meeting. He reworked the budget rubric that you have for this meeting in order to maintain that it would still be accurate, because we've actually been going through this process now for about 18, it's about 18 months since we first contacted Jamie.
Yeah, so things have gone up a lot.
Yeah, yeah, they've gone up. So, in terms of the exterior project that we have before you, the contractor still firmly believes that he can do it within the budget.
Okay.
Part of the reason that that can happen is because, to be real blunt, the church was not in good architectural shape in the 1980s, 90s, and early 2000s, and the church went through a massive capital campaign at that point to shore up the structure of the building. So most of the work that's being suggested in this current project is largely cosmetic and dealing with some of the finer details, which are actually going to be, to your point, fairly expensive to preserve the millwork, et cetera. But the exterior of the building is largely stable. It's just these finer, intricate details, which are at significant risk of being lost due to deterioration.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm happy to talk with you at other times about the other aspects, and if you would like to make a donation, I'd be happy to.
I will, I will.
Counselor, Counselor Fondillo.
Yeah, just quickly, I think it both passes the literal test of supporting historic renovations of historic buildings in downtown Franklin, but it also passes the emotional test of supporting community preservation in community spaces. Many of our houses of worship in Franklin serve as great community spaces. No place is that truer than the Methodist Church. I don't belong to any particular house of worship in Franklin, but just by, you know, being involved in the community, I've spent more time in the Methodist Church than any other house of worship, and that's due in large part just to all the different ways that they open their doors, welcoming community, and serve community, most importantly, and help neighbors. So I think, yeah, it's both the right thing to fund and, you know, emotionally a good thing to fund.
Thank you, Counselor Fondillo. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with my fellow counselors with what's been said in regards to this, and honestly, to Counselor Deloco's point, yeah, the cost of things is exuberant nowadays, especially the cost of materials, and I know labor can be extensive as well. So hopefully you're able to receive any additional funding necessary to make this project come to fruition. One of my only concerns is that, obviously, it's been stated already, is that there'd just simply be a detailed list of expenses so that nobody has any real issue with this once the bills are paid.
Yep. Mark?
I'm sorry.
I strike.
Through the chair, Reverend, just to clarify, if I read your materials correctly and the budgeting, everything's self-contained, and if this were not to pass, it's not like something else wouldn't, or if this did pass, you're not taking funds from the church? You just wouldn't do this project?
That's correct, yeah.
So it's self-contained?
That's right.
It's not a replacement for something else or interrelated in that sense?
That's correct, and to your, the way I heard your question, Counselor Jones, it's my understanding that should we be awarded this grant?
Yes.
The invoices have to be submitted to the town. No money is actually being transacted to the church.
That's correct, and one other point on that is there'll be a preservation restriction. At some point, they'll have to come back to you guys as well to approve a preservation restriction, along with the Historical Commission, just like we did for the Old South Church.
Mass Historic as well.
Right.
So.
Perfect. Just trying to make sure that T's are crossed and the I's are dotted.
I'm getting better.
Stuff like that. Yeah, it's all good.
We didn't think you were going to.
It's, honestly, I live a whole block from the church. You guys have seen me over there from time to time for Boy Scout events and other fun cookouts that you have in the back. The church, the building, the community center, whatever you want to call it, serves the community well. I am fully in support of this funding. I look forward to seeing the results. Obviously, I think to Mel's point, really, you know, keeping our little town a little town, this is one excellent way to do that. Plus, it's nice because it's right next to the Historic Museum, which apparently is in the middle of updating ourselves. It'll definitely add to the neighborhood, and once we figure out what to do with Davis Fair, we can, you know, fix everything up. But I look forward to the results, and I definitely will support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Plegory.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. Some things I have agreed with with this being said, and some things are my questions. We're using public funds for this. This is money that's taken out of everyone's tax bill so much for the CPA. So my question is, probably through Mark, to Mark, through the chair to Mark, for us to spend public money on a private building, and that's okay for us to do? Before you answer that, I'd like to know how many parishioners we have in the Methodist Church.
How would you define parishioner?
(laughter)
And I don't ask, I'm not, I don't ask that in being combative or mocking at all. Do you mean number of members?
Members.
Number of individuals we serve through the doors of the church? That answers quite the number of people that attend Sunday morning worship. Those three numbers are all drastically different.
Well, give me a number for each of them, then.
On Sunday morning, we average about 35.
Thirty-five people.
In a worship service. We have about 230 members. We just did an analysis for a grant we received through our community programs, which is just our concerts, the community closet, and community cookouts. In the last year, we served almost 1,200 people through those three programs. That does not include the 130 meals that go out per day through Meals on Wheels, nor the 20 students who attend the school in the basement, or any of the other activities, such as Girl Scouts, et cetera. So the, in terms of my congregation, I preach to 35 people on Sunday morning. In terms of folks that the church sees and ministers to on a weekly basis, that's easily between 200 and 300 people per week.
Okay.
I watched the CPA meeting also, and there were a lot of questions asked. This being a first time that we're using funds in this manner, I have a problem with it, only because I think it's going to open a can of worms now for many other public buildings, you know, not owned by the town. And I think in my mind that we just had a major fire at St. Mary's Church, and no public funds were used for that. And this is what I've heard from people. Why would we do something like this when we didn't? And I said, well, perhaps they didn't ask for anything, and that's why we didn't. I don't know that for a fact. But I...
I'd be happy to respond to that.
I think of the money that has been taken from the town residents, you know, in their tax bill for this, and I'm wondering how they feel using it for a private building rather than going right back into the town-owned building. If this had been for the Historical Commission for that building, that's a little different. We own it. If it had been for the Davis Fair, we own it. But we don't own this building, you know? Although, I think the historical significance, there's no problem whatsoever. It is a beautiful church. I've been in there many times, and I just love it, you know? But I just don't know, I just don't know about giving it off to a private, a private building.
I can't answer that.
And I just want to say, work was done not too many years ago, with painting and all of that outside.
Thirty years ago.
You're kidding.
No.
Thirty years. I remember it like yesterday, painting and all of that.
I want to say a couple of things, and this is why I would make a lousy politician, because I think dangling comments that get made and maybe need some clarification, I just can't let slide, so I just want to make a couple of comments. One, as a resident of Franklin, I don't view CPA funds as part of my tax bill. It comes on my tax bill through the assessment, but it's not a tax that's been applied. I view it more of like a fee more than anything. I'm mincing words, I get that.
Understood.
The other thing I would mention, in particular with your comment about St. Mary's, is actually, these two projects are fundamentally different.
Yes.
In two ways. First off, it's my understanding that the current St. Mary's Church was built in the 1930s, so this facility predates that by 80 years. The second thing is, is the damage done at St. Mary's was done in their, the bulk of the expense was in the restoration of their sanctuary, a public worship space, which does not pass the sniff test put out by the Supreme Judicial Council. So these funds would not be eligible for use of that. To your last point about public funds being used on a private facility, I think that's exactly why we're here. This hasn't been asked before, and the church, I, as the pastor, am very well aware that this is a new endeavor for us, and I'm proud of the application we've put forward to try and dot all the I's and cross all the T's to make sure all the boxes are checked, so that the public funds are used appropriately.
Okay, I'd only ask my fellow counselors to keep in mind that we may be setting a precedent right now, you know, by doing this, and with others coming forward, it can really open a can of worms here. Again, I have nothing against the Methodist Church. I know a few of your parishioners, in fact, and...
We're few but mighty. We're few but mighty.
Few but mighty, oh, yeah, okay. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Plegory. Mark, did you have...
I don't want to get too far into the legal weeds here, but there's a few things that are compounding. Number one, under Community Preservation Act, there is no prohibition on benefiting private property or conversely requiring it to be public property. The trade-off is, there has to be that permanent restriction put on for the benefit of the public to preserve the benefit that warranted the funding, the same way as with the former meeting house Habitat has agreed to a preservation restriction to preserve the exterior of the place. The guidance here is, and the complication frankly, is because of a Supreme Judicial Court case in 2018, and why the driver here, it's not just a church seeking community preservation funds. The general prohibition, which was the legal impetus for that case, is something called the Anti-Aid Amendment, which was originally passed in the Massachusetts Constitution back in the mid-1800s.
Right.
And I learned something, because I always thought it was a reaction to the busing and parochial school funding from that era, much more recently in Boston. It's not. It goes way back, and it's simply saying, there's not, there's, needs to be strict scrutiny and oversight of the application of public funds, tax dollars, to any private enterprise. And in particular then, in the case of a church, an active church, the court went further in another case and laid down specific criteria, three-pronged test, which was addressed here tonight. So if it were just the CPA and the application of funding, we wouldn't be talking about this. It's because of also the application of the Anti-Aid Amendment. And as I said earlier, I think based on the presentations that were made, the materials you have, it is legally defensible. Each of these matters is taken up on its own. There is no precedent.
Thank you, Mark. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. As Counselor Leggett can attest, as was, I was going to talk about the Anti-Aid Amendment. So, but first, we've got to say something first. The separation of church and state, it's as serious as it gets. I mean, we all love the Constitution, and that's, most of the yin and yang here is over that. Exactly. So, if somebody did challenge this, I'd bring up the Anti-Aid Amendment, like our town attorney did, which you need the three prongs, which he did speak to. But to me, the three prongs are good. It's the location, historical district, right? That's great. It's visible. You know how many of us go by that every day, and how nice that is going to keep the area? I mean, there's two. And three, the oldest church in this town, correct? Thank you. Okay, so this...
It's still operating.
Still operating. So I know, I probably got nervous when I was talking with this.
There's a... I don't want the Universalists, who are technically an older organization by about three years, to get too much on my back.
We won't do that.
The damn Universalists.
So you meet those prongs. So I think in a court challenge, to me, we would be fine. Let's get back to the separation of church for a second. You're obviously only doing the facade. That's great. Now, I know the answer to this, but let's, for the public, you have the cross right at the top.
Correct, yep.
That is, no public funds will be used for that religious symbol.
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I need people to know, because that, I think that would be a game-changer for my vote.
That is correct, and to be, to be really transparent, just so it is crystal clear, the, there is in the proposal the addition of a cupola upon which the cross will sit, but the restoration of the cross and the setting of the cross on that cupola is not part of this proposal. The cupola is part of the proposal, but not the cross. So just want to be real clear on that, because that's a sticking point.
Yep.
Through you really quickly. I thought what Jake was going to say was also very important to Counselor Chandler's comment. Originally, that part was a proposal at the CPC level. Just so everybody else watching at home, I know you guys watched it, that actually was taken off the proposal at the CPC meeting. So in full transparency, there was that, that original quote, but the CPC and the applicant both agreed to take that off for all the purposes that you stated.
That was about a $5,000 reduction in the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you do have, I'm in favor of this. And lastly, you made some great points about what could come behind this, but I think with it being the oldest, that kind of cuts some of that out, I think, some of the others that would come, such as maybe Dean College or things like that. Okay. Just trying to make this...
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Cormier-Legger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It stinks to have to be the unpopular kid up here at the table again, but Jacob, I've been trying to wrap my head around this one, and I'm having a tough time. And I'm trying my hardest to separate you and the wonderful work that you do, and the... and the wonderful asset that you have been to our community versus the building and the needs of the building because I think they are very different. I 100% support you and support the work that you do at that church. I think many of the churches in town could say that they have community meetings, that they have meal programs, that they have clothing drives, that they have scouts, they have theater, they have all sorts of wonderful things that make them a benefit to the community, right? That's a huge part of why we have churches. It's a huge reason why you don't pay taxes, right? And that's where I get stuck. I get stuck on, as Councilor Plegory alluded to, a private organization asking for public tax money. You see it as a fee. I think most people see it as an additional tax because that's how it, that's how it comes. And I think people have some expectations with how we spend their tax dollars. I think there are publicly owned buildings that could benefit from $100,000. And that's where I'm getting sort of wrapped up with, for me, your congregation needs to take care of the building, not the town of Franklin, right? And that's, I do worry also about, you know, the term historic. We throw that around a lot here in town. Seems like anything that's over a certain amount of years is historic. Councilor Plegory is now historic. That is only a dig because she still doesn't know my name. But that's, that's just an ongoing joke between she and I. But I do worry about Dean College has a ton of buildings on the historic registry, right? They're going to come to us asking for CPA money too with, you know, pretty vibrant college campus going on there. I worry about this sort of opening up that Pandora's box. And I worry also about our other churches in town. Maybe they don't meet the need or meet the litmus test of being old and historic, but they certainly still have capital needs, right? Our temple in town has been undergoing a capital campaign forever. St. John's literally had to sell off part of their property in order to stay open, right? The Catholic Church in town has quite a few needs and has a much larger congregation for various reasons, right? So I just, I struggle with this one. And I just wanted to be open about that with you and with the members that my vote is not going to be about what you're doing at the church and about the programs that you're doing because I think all of that is wonderful. It's really just, it's just not passing the test for me.
I have two responses for that. First is, in no way is this $100,245 going to support the operational expenses of the church.
Yep, I know.
So to be clear, because your comment made it sound as if other churches would be coming for support for operational expenses and that would again not pass the sniff test of the Judea, whatever, the Supreme Court of Mass. Judea, Supreme Judicial Court of the State of Mass, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There's that. The second thing, and I mentioned this in the CPC committee, and I think it bears being put out there in the public record as well. The Anti-Aide Amendment, because of this application, is getting scrutinized heavily for its application toward charitable, or sorry, religious institutions. But the Anti-Aide Amendment actually says that such scrutiny should be applied to, and I'm quoting, "any infirmary, hospital, institution, primary or secondary school, or charitable or religious undertaking." And so I actually don't necessarily agree with the scrutiny that you think should be applied in this case. As a resident of the town, I would 100% agree with that. But I would encourage you, and again, I said this at the CPC meeting, that we not single out religious institutions, but instead give caution to the use of any public funds for use by private charitable entities. That in guard, that ensures that entanglement between state and those entities is not interfered with. So any scrutiny being applied to the Franklin UMC should quite frankly also be applied to other charitable or nonprofit entities in town being considered for public funding of any sort, including Franklin Food Pantry, the YMCA, the Safe Coalition, the Children's Museum of Franklin and the Franklin Performing Arts Company. I don't disagree. I would just caution you not to apply the scrutiny only to the Franklin UMC.
Yeah, and all of that is incredibly valid, Reverend. And I wasn't trying to allude to operational costs. I believe I said capital. Because I do know that those other churches and temples in town have pretty large capital needs. And I know the money that you're referring to for those other nonprofits in town, but that didn't come through CPA. That came through state grants that were sort of channeled through the town, but it wasn't town money. I have no control as an elected member here of what the state does with their money. But I do have some say in what we do with town money. And I do consider CPA to be town money.
May I speak?
When I say you can. I don't have anything else.
You all said Ted.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Now you may respond.
So I just have to say I'm a town resident. I love that the town actually voted in 2021 to have an additional fee on my tax bill for projects that otherwise we know would go unfunded, okay? As a town resident, and to your point, and to your point too, I think, Ted, I voted for it because I thought it gave the opportunity, and this was way before, I wouldn't even remember the church at that point, I don't think. But to me, it gave the opportunity for three things. Open space, affordable housing, historic preservation. Those are the three pillars in the CPC, if I understand it correctly. I think the educational piece for many people in the community, and this is how I talk about it, is that we have that money. It is in a separate bucket. It is in a totally separate bucket. So for my friends who say, oh, I don't think I want my taxes spent on that, that and that, well, we voted for that. By law, I believe, a certain percentage of that money needs to be going to certain things. And the law that I voted for did not say it was all-town money for all-town projects. And unless I'm confused, private entities are part of that so that if some dilapidated house and an owner that's falling apart down the street that I thought would be, why doesn't somebody do that? Like, why doesn't somebody do that? That somebody could come and say, hey, I would love to preserve this for the town of Franklin, but I need help for the exterior work. In my view, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong. I don't think I'm thinking about it wrongly as a tax-paying citizen of the town of Franklin. Those three pillars, these things that are in this, I love the projects that are getting done. But I don't necessarily think every single thing should be only town-owned because I do not think that is how that law is written for those funds. I could be wrong.
And I misspoke earlier. We're the second, not the first. I heard the mumble behind me. Actually, the Old South Meeting House would technically be the first privately owned piece of property.
Sold it all.
Right. That's not, right. But I mean, in terms of a private entity benefiting from CPA funding.
I don't know if that makes you feel...
Tim, you all set? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Plegory gave me $5 to say that. You all set?
Yes.
Thank you. I do like the project and I like the concept. I do have a question and maybe it's a concern, but it's a question as well. I know across the country, not just the town of Franklin, religious institutions are having their issues with congregations and the strength of their congregations. And I know in some cases, and in most of them, that if something were to happen, all of a sudden your congregation goes to zero. And the higher institution, and I'm not sure what it is, but I'm sure it's regional or statewide, comes in and says, we can't support that, your church anymore. What protection might we have for the investment we've made in that building?
The deed restriction.
The deed restriction.
And that's, that's why I'm asking the question. I want people to understand that there is...
That's correct. That's historic preservation restriction. Actually, Community Preservation Act requires, given whatever the investment is, an appropriate restriction be put up record at the Registry of Deeds in perpetuity. So you have historic preservation restrictions. You have agricultural and conservation restrictions. Conservation restrictions on open space. You have affordable housing restrictions. There are appropriate restrictions to put up record depending what the project is. They're required actually by the statute. And that is permanent and that, it could be, the building, as long as it's standing, can be put to another use, but you at least have to keep the appearance of, the facade. And the language of a restriction has enforceability provisions in it.
I knew the answer. I just wanted to make sure that everybody else here understands that there is protection for the investment that we would make in this project. Okay, that's my two cents. Is there anyone in council chambers that has a question or comment? Please. Ladies before gentlemen. Just name and address, please.
Hi, Shannon Nealon, 15 Rosetta Hill Road, as you heard earlier. I think in terms of setting a precedent, I think that was a really, really great question. That was a question I had myself. I was happy to hear of the community impact. But in terms, but to your point, very good point about setting a precedent, this is how you set the precedent. This is narrowly focused. It is exterior only. They're taking out the, you know, even the cross. I'm not a religious person. I believe in separation of church and state. But when you have this availability and it's laid out clearly by a, by the courts and they hit, really good presentation, by the way, you hit all the marks. It's exactly how you do it. They hit all the marks. And if you can take this opportunity to set a precedent like this with such a narrow focus that directly hits all the points, then when you get the future asks, you're able to point to this. And anything that's in a gray area, anything that's outside the bounds is going to be tailored narrowly to this. So although I completely agree with the points about public funding, yet not using public funding for private entities. I hate taxes, so I don't want my taxes going to, you know, frivolous things. But when the precedent is there in the courts and when they hit it so narrowly, I would encourage you to seize upon this opportunity to set the precedent for the town that this is the very, very narrow scope within which this would fit. I would also encourage your team to maybe expand upon the uses in the public because I guess a lot of people here know what these uses are, but not all of us do and not all of us can attend all the meetings. So it may not have been as widely known, the availability of the building for the public use. I think that's a really important point that if we're using my money, I want to know when I can use that building. So I think that maybe expanding on that a little bit more for the people in the public that don't know all those things, that might help. And I've already given your presentation. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Steve? Name and address, please.
Yes, Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia. Community Information Director, Franklin Mattis, Franklin Public Radio. Two quick points. One, to confirm as an attest for the community involvement. As one who manages the community calendar, United Methodist Church does have those community events, as alluded to. I also can personally attend. I was there Saturday when the Rise Up Group, and I'll put them a separate plug. You've heard of Ali Rayom. She's on the Disability Commission. I participate in that to learn from them in terms of how to reach the communications, which also, that's one of our major challenges. How do we communicate to each other? And in community, you can have those small discussions. So the small discussion Saturday, we were doing some little crafts and talking and learning about what's going on. That's exactly the point for what this is. The other piece is process. And to reflect, having participated in many of the meetings, certainly CPC, early CPA, and it's been alluded here tonight, this is a step in the process. It's already been previewed that the checkboxes have been met. They get to go spend it. As our attorney has said, there will be additional documentation that you'll be requested to approve to solidify the use of these funds. It's not, they're not, it's green dollars, but there are specific uses, as already been mentioned. You can't use this somewhere else in our own operational budget. And I love the fact that a community group has actually come up because as has been mentioned earlier, it's only been town use, which is fine. We need the money, especially when we use it on our own facilities. But for somebody to come up like this, absolutely. I truly appreciate it. And akin to what Miss Nealon mentioned earlier, by doing the due diligence, asking the questions, you are indeed setting the precedent for all the other approvals and process questions to come up after this because this is going to be the first one. Technically not because you already did the South Meeting House. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in council chambers? Please name and address again, please, Max.
Maxwell Marangella, 127 Central Park Terrace. I wanted to push back against two things. First is this idea that it's a can of worms. I think we heard that with the pride flag and it hasn't, I haven't heard of any other requests for a flag and we heard that before. It's not going to be a can of worms. Second, number two, I just want to talk about the sense of community and hit back against this idea that it's a parish's individual responsibility to raise funds for themselves. When I, I'm Jewish. When we had the attack, the anti-Semitic incident in town, UMC was there rallying with us, standing with us. And that was so powerful. When St. Mary's had their incident, they were there, standing with us. Through the Interfaith Council. But a community is more than just the individual people in it. It's more than just individual religions. It's all of us coming together to support one another. And I think that indirectly, you know, private, public, that's all a blur because we're all supporting our community. And I think we really need to step up and support our community and UMC, who has supported us and as well as supporting, you know, this is, this benefit, this facade of the building is going to benefit all of us as we drive by there. So I just want to reiterate that this idea that, you know, I don't think that it's true that individual religious groups should do everything themselves. They all rely on our community and they're all part of our community. So I hope you consider that when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers that has a question or a comment?
I was passed a question. And the question was, can the community use a portion of the building for an art gallery? And I would answer by saying, I have actually had that conversation with the Franklin Arts Association. And they would love to do temporary galleries. One of the challenges with the use of art inside of our facility for such a usage is our lack of wall space because of so many windows. But 100% yes. But 100% yes.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions. Is there anyone out in Zoomland that has a question?
See none.
See none. So the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-27. A majority vote's required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time. I would just say, Trish is going to hand out information about those public events we mentioned earlier to all of you. We have extra copies, and there's a pretty good person who came up earlier. There is a community cookout on Saturday, free burgers and hot dogs from 5:30 to 6:30, so come on out.
Yeah, I mean, free.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 25-49. Franklin Town Council's support for proposed General R Chapter 40B Affordable Housing Project at 202 Washington Street pursuant to DHCD's Local Initiative Program, better known as ALIP. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-49. Frank the Town Council's support for proposal General R Chapter 40B Affordable Housing Project located at 202 Washington Street pursuant of the EOHLC's Local Initiative Program, ALIP Friendly 40B. Whereas General R Chapter 40B Section 20-23 provide legal framework for the creation of local affordable housing, which is administered by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And EOHLC has enacted a regulation creating a local initiative, which is known as ALIP, which also, I'm sorry, which allows a Chapter 40B developer to work collaboratively with a municipality to obtain its support for proposed affordable housing project. And whereas the EOHLC's ALIP Regulation provides that a municipality demonstrate its support through its executive, Chief Executive Officer signing a letter of support, and the Franklin Home Move Charter provides that the municipality's chief executive officer, being the town administrator. And whereas the Franklin Town Administrator has created a voluntary process and a checklist for a developer who proposes a Chapter 40B ALIP Affordable Housing Project to allow, which includes informal reviews by town staff, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission, and a presentation to the Franklin Town Council. And whereas New Generation Custom Homes has proposed to develop a Chapter 40B Affordable Housing Project on approximately 14 acres of land located at 202 Washington Street consisting of up to 39 home ownerships, 39 units. Whereas New Generation Custom Homes has submitted an application to town pursuant to the above-described voluntary ALIP approval process, and participated in above-referenced reviews, and made a presentation to the Franklin Town Council at a duly posted public meeting thereof. Now, therefore, the Franklin Town Council, acting on behalf of the Town of Franklin, hereby expresses its support for a New Generation Customs Home proposed affordable housing project for up to 39 homeownership units to be developed on approximately 14 acres located at 202 Washington Street, directs the town administrator to prepare and sign a letter of support to EOHLC for a proposed project, and to sign the EOHLC's application and/or other forms, and to take any other actions which the EOHLC requires to demonstrate town support for the project. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Move Charter.
Move Resolution 25-49.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through, Mr. Chairman. So tonight's application is a Local Initiative Program application. This is not final approval of a project. Folks read my memo, and they'll go through a short presentation. The site is up on the screen here at 202 Washington Street. I think there's a map over here that they're providing of the actual complex. And these are, I believe, 13 triplex buildings, three units apiece. The proponent will discuss, I'm sure, answer questions. People have the price point, which I know is usually what people are interested in. And 25% of the units will be actually deeded affordable in perpetuity. But for the standard housing index calculation, 100% of the units, all 39, would be added to our SHI, or over our 10% number with Chapter 40B. So I'll let the proponents do a presentation, and then myself and the staff are here to answer any questions folks may have. Thank you.
Please, just introduce yourself, please.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jonathan Silverstein. I am counsel for the applicant. My office in Concord. And with me is Michael Hassett, who is the project engineer, and will be able to answer any technical questions about the project. As was indicated earlier, this project has previously been presented to the Planning Board with a recommendation of approval to the council. At this point, the project is, we have not yet gone to the state for issuance of our project eligibility letter. We're hoping to do so as a local initiative project, ALIP or Friendly 40B, with this body's approval. I'm going to just go through the project at a very high level. I know you've had a lot of discussion tonight and have a long agenda, but we're happy to answer any more detailed questions the council might have. And I do have a PowerPoint. I think we might have gotten it out a little bit too late, have available now, but we'll provide it afterwards, and if the council has any questions about it, we're always happy to answer. I will, just in terms of overview of the project team, the applicant is Marcelo Alves of New Generation Custom Homes, local builder, has done a lot of beautiful work in the area. I'm sure the council's familiar with it. As I said, Mr. Hassett from Greer and Halman is the engineer. Did I pronounce that right?
You did.
The traffic engineer, who is the best in the business, is Jeff Dirk from Vanasen Associates. And as I said, my name is Jonathan Silverstein. I'm counsel for the applicant with Flatman, Bobrovsky, Hagerty, and Silverstein. The general location is on the map here. It's on Washington Street and Taft Drive. It's about 14 and 1/3 acres total in area. And the project will be, as you've been told, 39 units is the proposal. 10 of those units will be affordable, deed restricted in perpetuity. What I think is unique about this project, and I wonder if I can, can I give this a shot to see if it'll work? Because I do think it would be, it's a little different, I think, from a lot of the projects, 40B projects that you've seen recently. Hopefully, this will work. They're triplex units, all home ownership, not rental. So I think it's really providing a type of housing product, both at market rate, which is necessarily going to be much more affordable than the single-family McMansions that you're seeing built, tear-down lots. And at the same time, more of a home than maybe a garden-style apartment building, which is important, fills an important role in the overall housing scheme, but this is something that I think you don't see as often. So I think this is a really unique project that would benefit the town. As I said, this is the project site in blue. It's an interestingly shaped site, but the project itself is focused up at Washington Street. We're not trying to jam in every last bit of housing we can get, and 40% of the project is going to, or of the project site is going to remain open space. So as I said, it's 39 townhouse units. Each unit will have four bedrooms, two-car garage, and just over 2,000 square feet of living space. 13 buildings, 10 of them will be deed restricted affordable. It's a condo project with 40% of the site as open space. This is the map that we have in hard copy here, the overall site plan. Again, it's a preliminary site plan. We still would have, even with this body's approval, we still have to be approved by, and what's that, DHCD, EOHLC, and we still have to then apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals and receive a comprehensive permit. So there's plenty of review. We have done a preliminary traffic assessment. Not surprisingly, since it's pretty low density, there isn't a significant traffic impact, but that will all be reviewed by the ZBI. Here is the proposed floor plan. I don't know how visible that is to everyone, but basically, it's two floors, four bedrooms on the second floor, two-car garage, and kitchen, mudroom, and washroom, and sort of office space bonus room on the first floor. In terms of project benefits, as I said, it's sort of a cluster-style development. A great deal of open space being preserved contributes to a new type of housing diversity in the town. 10 affordable units. It's really nice design in that there's going to be nice usable trail space connecting to the open space as an amenity on the site, which again, is not something you will be seeing a lot of 40Bs. In terms of process to date, there were hearings before, or meetings with the Planning Board in March and April, with a vote recommending approval in April from the Planning Board. We're here tonight on the 23rd, and if you approve, we would look forward to presenting a ALIP application to housing and livable communities, and then submitting a project application to the ZBI. So I'm going to stop talking. Of course, happy to answer any questions, as is Mr. Hassett, and I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Sheridan?
Yeah, so this 222 Washington Street, is that the address?
202.
202. So there's a house on that now? Is that going to stay or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you go back and look, this is the property, there, we're going to be carving out at the entrance.
Next to the house, kind of, right?
Yeah. So you can see, this is the existing house right here.
Yeah.
And we're going to have sort of a boulevard-style entrance drive. That's another nice thing about this project, is it's really set back quite a bit, tucked away. It's not going to be very visible. So, but yes, that is staying.
Sounds great to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Delacour?
Thank you. So I'm probably the one that's most connected here, because I live on Wilson Drive, so. But it looks great, but you did say four bedrooms? I thought there were three.
So, yeah, so I actually just noticed, there's a typo on the plan. It does say three bedrooms, but the, and I actually just picked up on it sitting here, that there are actually four bedrooms on the upper floor, if you can make this out.
Okay.
This is, the master bed, the primary bedroom is above the two-car garage, and then there are three usable bedrooms in addition on the second floor. So it is four-bedroom units.
Okay. Okay. No, I'm just curious. I thought, I thought I heard there were going to be three.
You probably did.
Yeah. So, affordable, how much is affordable going to be?
So that's determined at the time we get final approval, and it's based on...
Yeah, I know how it's based, but I'm just kind of curious.
Right, so I don't know what the area median income for a family of five would be. That's what a four-bedroom would be priced at, 80% of that?
80%.
After you also pull out homeowners' association fees, insurance, taxes, stuff like that, what's left is what'll support the mortgage.
Right.
And it's so, it's so volatile right now, given the interest rates and everything, that whatever it is now, but...
It's just so hot for the young kid. I'm always an advocate for the young kids to get a, to get a house, because I know how hot it is for them.
I agree. I mean, the nice thing about this, again, is if this were 39 single-family 4,000-square-foot homes.
Yeah.
The affordables would be one thing, but then the market-rate units would be $1 million.
Million, too.
Here, the market-rate units, they're four-bedroom, but they're 2,000-square-foot triplex units. It's by definition, they're going to be small-A affordable as compared to what most builders are building now. Understandably, because when you can only build one house on a lot, that's, you're going to make that work the best you can.
Right.
But this presents an opportunity that the market wouldn't normally present.
Right. I agree. And I'm a little concerned about, I think the project's good, and you said you're about Taft. Is that where the sewer's going to come down?
I believe there is utility in that area.
Yes, there's a, there's a, there's a cross-country trail that runs underneath the power lines, and then we're going to be running down the cross-country sewer underneath those power lines, and then down an existing trail to minimize clearing and disturbance, and then tying into the existing gravity sewer in Taft.
All right. I just, when you, just for the public to know, when they say Taft, they might think that you're coming in on Taft, even though it doesn't look...
No, no site access of Taft.
No, no development, no access.
Not even emergency access.
I didn't think there was, but I just wanted the public to know.
So this is what we're talking about. This is going to be the sewer easement.
Yeah.
But then it's going to be all open space.
Right, right, right. Great. Okay, that's good. Probably have a lot of kids up there, so I imagine we're going to need to make sure that we have safety for the buses and stuff like that, probably. But that, with that lot, with the house up front, it should be okay, because you're not getting rid of the big house. You're not going to, the big house is going to stay.
Right. The existing house, that's the last house before you cross the bridge over 195.
Yeah, the Brahma.
That's going to remain.
And there's a lot of nice space on-site for kids to, you know, for amenities for families.
Okay.
All set? You all set?
I'm all set. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair. Hi. The, I think that we have heard a lot about Friendly 40Bs lately here in Franklin, and especially rental units, and I think that this is one of the things that people have been asking for. It is actually a purchase, something that people can purchase, and I think this is, this is really great. I do remember, I think there was a recommendation from the Planning Board about reducing the units a little bit. Did you think about that? Have you thought, did it, did it not fit? Like what, like what is your answer?
We did, I did see that. It's always a question.
I can speak to that. So the intent was to present the same thing that Planning Board had seen, so that we weren't getting opposing comments based on two sets of plans. And then, you know, presuming a favorable review by you, we'll take both planning and your comments, incorporate them into a comprehensive revised plan that would then be presented to the ZBI for technical review and other, other issues.
And I do want to know, when clients come to me and say they're thinking about a 40B, the first thing I always say is, well, you always propose multiples of four, because 25% of the units are affordable, and you lose about one and a half units' worth of profit on that affordable unit. So you, the, the other unit and a half of profit is, is the revenue, the net revenue you get out of the project. So here, it's not a huge deal, but I'll note that this is 39 units. If we went up to 40 units, we wouldn't have to provide another affordable. If we go down to 36, the town loses an affordable unit. You know, we can, we can certainly look at reducing density. I guess the question is, you know, this is not a very dense project. There's a lot of land. It's not very visible. And, you know, I think we'll take our cues during the gearing process, but I want, you know, I wonder where the public benefit lies the most, but obviously, we're open to that.
Thank you. I just wanted to know if you had thought about it?
Yeah. Yeah.
But thank you for the clarity.
We have and we will, definitely.
And the fact that you didn't want to have two different plans, that helps a lot. So, thank you very much. I think it's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what's been said already is clear. This is definitely more along the lines of what the public and people are looking for in regards to having a home, you know, a place where someone can buy and make it their own. People, people do tend to take better care of something they own compared to rental properties, and this is definitely a keen area to put this kind of project in. My only concern, and I know it's going to come up at the planning board level, is the highway. You are really close to the highway. What kind of thought has been put into protecting the neighborhood from extraneous noise?
The residents of this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we've gotten into that level of detail. There is obviously, we're keeping a pretty good amount of vegetative buffer that's existing. We could put in, you know, sound mitigation fencing and things like that. I, you know, keep it firm, but I think the elevations actually work in our favor as well.
Yeah, our site is raised up above the highway, and then a significant portion of woods would remain between the highway and our property. It's not cleared right up to our lot line, so I'm sure that'll be part of the zoning review, and we'll look at making sure that sound issues are not going to be...
Yeah.
It's definitely in our interest, obviously.
Right. Because you want to sell, you want several units that people, granted, you're not, you know, you're not right next to the train station, like some of the properties.
Right. And that's part of the trade-off, too, is avoiding having the units close to existing dwellings. You end up putting them in slightly disadvantaged, you know, positions for us, but that respect the privacy of the existing neighborhood.
Very good. Other than that, I'd like to see more about this from the planning board, but I am...
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor, call me a ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. One question. Has the ownership of the land already been transferred, or is it contingent upon this process being approved?
I'm not 100% certain. The advocates in the...
It's under agreement.
Under agreement, okay.
So, it's under agreement with the contingency of probably that all of these approvals happen? Okay. There's been some concerns raised to us from abutters, so I would just ask you guys to please keep in mind that maybe some concessions can be made for the people that already have the homes that abut this project.
Absolutely. Part of, part of the planning review, they issued a letter with a list of revisions. Going through those, I think we're in agreement with pretty much all of them. They're reasonable, and so the final design will absolutely take all of those concerns, which were largely abutter-focused, into account in our, in our final plan design.
If you, you look at the letter right here, you'll see that there's a lot of existing vegetation that's going to be preserved, kept in place. We'll have a detailed landscaping plan, and the nearest home to the existing houses that, other than the lot that we own and will be, or will own and will be splitting off, is, I don't know, a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
But will absolutely work.
But yeah, part of it was additional screening and replantings, you know, moving the infiltration basin, adjusting that to provide less clearing media abutters. That's all stuff we're, we're going to look at and make sure we kind of focus on during our revisions.
Fantastic. I know it's already been said, but we, I just want to drive home the point that we have been talking about trying to provide more homes like this for a long time. It's been a personal concern of mine the whole four years I've sat up here, that I have concerns with the apartment buildings that get approved, and I kept advocating to try to have some more 40B affordable, single-family homes. Townhouses fall under that category. I believe strongly that this gives a pathway to homeownership for a lot of people that would not be able to afford the current market rates in Franklin, and I think it's a truly well-thought-out project. I think you guys have put a beautiful design forward. I think the design of the home is great. I think it will be attractive to a lot of people. I hope, because I heard at some meetings that the figure of $300,000 sort of floated around for the affordable number. I don't know where we'll land any, you know, but I would love to see it, you know, somewhere land around that figure because that is a great entry point for certainly a lot of working families that would love to go Franklin home.
For the young kids.
And, you know, particularly the first-time homebuyers out there that are often looking. It's also worth noting that everybody that goes through the 40B part of your proposal will also get a reduced HOA fee, correct?
Generally, it either, it can be, it can be a reduced HOA fee. At the end of the day, it kind of doesn't much matter because what the state looks at is, let's say, just for easy math, because I'm a lawyer, you know, 80% of area median income turns out to be, for a family of five, turns out to be $100,000 a year. That means that the price has to be affordable to someone earning that, which means they can't be required to spend more than 30% or $30,000 on housing. So, let's say HOA fees and insurance turn out to be $6,000 a year. That means that their mortgage and insurance, mortgage and interest payments combined can't exceed $2,000 a month, right? So, $24,000 a year plus $6,000. $2,000 a month is probably going to support a mortgage on about a $300,000, $350,000. You know, I, it's very rough numbers, but that's how it'll work out. My point being, you lower the HOA fee, that raises the sale price and vice versa. It's sort of...
Okay.
Washes out.
Yeah. It, it, it's all going to come out to whatever that number is, and we're told what we charge.
And has a decision been made yet if it will be onsite managed or offsite managed? Do you, do you know that yet?
I mean, my experience in a condo project of 39 units, it's not usually large enough to merit onsite management, and there's no facilities on here proposed for that.
Okay.
But ultimately, it would be up to the HOA to decide how they want to manage it.
Yeah, and I only ask that question because oftentimes onsite-managed properties are just slightly better kept, right? Slightly better having tenant, you know, owner issues addressed quickly versus a company that's an hour away type of thing, but that's getting into the weeds. I fully support the project, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Call me a ledger. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Again, like they said, I'm glad it's not apartment-style. It's a big deal right now. Glad it's 25%. The one thing I didn't hear is, everything's four bedrooms?
All of the units, I believe, are four bedrooms. As currently conceived, I mean, these are preliminary thoughts, you know, so...
Okay.
I, I wouldn't say that's written in stone, so...
Because I was wondering, of all, I was wondering how many of the higher bedrooms would be the affordable? So, if you're saying if you have three bedrooms, say you have 10 units that are three bedrooms and everything else?
It has to be proportional.
Okay. So, 25% of the threes, 25%...
Absolutely. The state requires that, and it requires that the affordable units be dispersed throughout the project and not sort of clustered in one spot.
The project. Yeah, and I got you.
And we can't say, oh, all the end units are going to be marketed and all the interior units are going to be affordable. Again, we're basically going to be told which units to designate as affordable.
Yeah. I mean, I know you, this is, I actually do like this project, but as you can tell, this board has had enough of 40B.
I understand.
And that's, but I do like this. You're coming in with a totally different avenue, so...
40B can work in a lot of different ways and look very different, so sometimes people sort of think 40B and think of one thing, and it's not one thing. It can be a lot of different types of projects.
Well, I still think they're going to be a little more than $300,000 for the affordables. Maybe five, I mean...
I think they are too.
We hope so.
Heard that number.
All right. I just didn't find people to think that they were getting here $300,000.
Good form of argument.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Plegrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recognize the two of you that are here, but is there applicant here? Anyone from the Restino family? Come on up, I want to ask you some questions.
Please, through the chair.
Through the chair, yes. This is something that has been going on for a while in discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify that I'm not part of the Restino family. I'm the applicant and the...
Wait a minute. You're the applicant, you're not part of the Restino family?
No.
Okay, but over here on your paperwork, it says Florence Restino is the owner.
He's the owner, but the applicant is new generation, that's Mr. Alex's company.
Okay, but is there someone from the Restino family here?
He's right there. Rob's right there. Rob's right there. Excuse... What?
My name is Bill Quinn. I live at 230 Washington Street, and I'm legally responsible for the property at 202 Washington Street.
You're legally responsible?
Yes, I am.
You're not a Restino? You're not a Restino?
My mother was a Restino.
Your mu, your mother was Restino?
Yes.
Who was Florence?
Florence is my, was my aunt. She just passed away recently.
Oh, all right. I didn't realize.
At 100, she was 101 years old.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
But my question was going to be that everyone is in favor of all of this that's going on, the Restino family. Is that correct?
As I say, I am legally responsible.
So, on your own?
I'm on my own. I have not requested that it will be probated yet. It's just been too soon, but I will inherit the entire estate.
Okay. All right. I'm just hearing some other things, but okay, I have you. We're on record now as to what he's saying, and we thank you very much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You all set?
I'm all set, but I just want to make a comment that with four bedrooms, we better start keeping some of the schools that were closing. Think about it. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegrey. Any other counselors? Anyone in council chambers? Please, Mark.
Mark Minicali, 31 Longfellow Drive. I have a question and a comment. My question, I thought I saw in the, from the planning board meeting, the request to consider removing the boulevard entrance? Or am I confused with something else?
That is, that was requested, and...
Again.
But...
You spoke about having the same plan...
Yes, and not only that, but this project went through tech review with the town departments prior to planning board, and we think the boulevard may have been requested by the fire department. We haven't confirmed that yet, but we want to make sure that eliminating the boulevard is not an issue for the fire department. If everybody, from a safety perspective, is on board with it, we're more than happy to. It both, you know, enhances privacy, privacy improves setbacks to the neighbors, and is a, is a reduction in cost for us. So, it would be a win for everybody as long as the fire department is on board, so...
So, my comment, I am supportive of the project as well. I am a member of the Ben for Franklin Affordable Housing Group here in town. The council has heard us talk about being supportive of a lot of apartment-based 40B projects. We also do support homeownership 40B projects, and I think, I think it's healthy for the community to have both apartment and home, and ownership 40B projects going. So, I'm very supportive of this. It looks like a good opportunity to get some affordable homeownership units in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Please, once again, name and address, please.
Hi, Karen Miller again. 246 Washington Street. Can I?
Sure can.
I'll try to be loud enough so you can hear me. I'm the first non-Restino down the street to this project, so these are Restino homes. I'm in this home here. And just for clarification for some of the questions that were asked, obviously been following the project, right, as anyone would when it's literally in your backyard and side yard. It was talked about at the planning board that the units would probably go around $800,000 apiece. I actually had thought it was three bedrooms, but four bedrooms, three bedrooms. Earlier in the evening, I had asked, what's the money for? Why do we need more money? I'm going to answer it for you. So, if you have 2.5 children, right? Fair. Lots of kids, we've already been saying it, children, and you're going to get roughly 100 children out of this project, need to keep a school open, et cetera, et cetera. But think about the value to the town of that. There's still the real estate taxes that will be received from that. Using an $800,000, that value, like I said, was thrown around at the planning board meeting. Using that, using the annual report, pure per pupil, 17.9,000. The cost, the revenue that would be received from 39 units, roughly 360, 365,000 a year. The cost to educate those folks, over 1.7 million. Okay? These are all nothing. I have made up, once again, nothing. I pulled from the internet. All the information, town report. All right? So, we look at this project and we say, we think this is a wonderful thing. If we get these children here, that cost is 1.3, 1.4 million a year to educate these children. The project itself, somebody said that it's tucked back into the woods. You won't see it. If you drive up Washington Street, when you go by the High Tension Myers, you can see the high hill. This actually sits high on a hill. Pardon me, I'm approaching you again. On this one, you can't see, but if you look at the layout, it shows the slices of land here. It will show slices of land like this. You all remember the project not too long ago that's approved but not built yet. 255,000-square-foot warehouse. This project sits on the line. The next neighbor, the closest neighbor, I'm going to call it on the King Street side. On the King Street side is that warehouse. The warehouse is not built yet, but it's approved. They could start construction tomorrow. It's gone through all the approvals. So, this lovely little neighborhood with its 100 small children is budding the warehouse. On the other side of Washington Street here is the other project, Franklin Plus, the industrial project. Tractor, trailer trucks, all that, coming in and out of there, all the traffic going in and out of there. The dog kennel, everything else across the street in that industrial zone. So, this is not a situation that they're building in this nice little neighborhood. Every time I've been in front of you all for the last couple years, the last couple times, is because of that. This is all industry now. So, now we're going to go back to, oh, we rezoned that because nobody, the words in 2012 from this council, nobody wants to be sitting that close to 495. Nobody wants to be there in residential. And now the project is coming for you, saying, we want residential here. There is no sidewalks. I have no sidewalks in front of my house, no sidewalks down to Taft. All these children, the buses cannot go up in there, right? Private, private streets. Town will be plowing, town will be taking care of that road, the private streets. So, the buses will be coming on unsidewalked Washington Street? The private streets, so the buses will be coming on, on sidewalked Washington Street, on the other side of 495 with all the traffic coming up from the new industrial park across the street, industrial building, forty-five thousand square feet. Finally, they talked about fourteen acres and forty percent, and it sounds so juicy, right? That sounds great, all this open space. The reason it's open space like that is the High Tension Myers, right? You can't build under them, that part of the lot is just unbuildable because of the structure, so they are clustered into a buildable area. Also, the topography of the land, like I said, high on a hill. And one more thing on this. We talked about this at the planning board also. Sitting high on the hill, this down here, this over here, these are retention ponds for the water runoff, sitting high on the hill. This retention pond here, you see how close it is to the houses, not only to mine, but the other Restino neighbors here, with the retention pond here. I realize there's way smarter engineers than I will always be, and we talked about that, I'm not an engineer at all, and we talked a little bit about that, and I had asked at the planning board, you have a retention pond, where does the water go? Underwater, underground, right? It's coming downhill. Where's it all going? Underground, maybe to our houses, but also there's already an issue on Washington Street that the town engineers will tell you, they've worked on quite a bit, working on it across the street, where they get lots of runoff down the hill, because this is on the hill. I think everyone knows what I'm talking about, you drive over 495 downhill, it's a six percent grade slope, that water's going. So the, you know, it just sounds like a beautiful project, and you look at it, and you look at the building like it's beautiful. Some of your counselors did mention a couple years back, no, none of the younger generation wants to buy houses anymore. These are eight hundred thousand dollar homes, Taft Drive just recently sold, single-family homes in that price range or less, in that same price range, right? So this isn't the affordable housing solution. Locally, many. So sorry to take up so much time, I was just trying to, can I make one more quick point? Construction, the project across the street is three and a half years, still sitting in a construction zone. The neighborhood has been in construction zone for three and a half years. Consideration, if there is consideration for this project, that, you know, how long are we going to be in a construction zone for? For those of you who've never had the pleasure, ask the people on Uncas Pond what it's like to live in a construction zone, you really don't have a feel for it till you've actually lived in it, have to call Gus because they're four o'clock in the morning. And, and so, an appreciation for that, what this neighborhood has dealt with, most importantly, two hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot warehouse is the neighbor to this property, not mentioned tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in?
Hi, my name is Robert LaRiviera, I also live at 230 Washington Street. I just want to say the fact of the sidewalk, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street, is not true. Sidewalk goes up to 236 Washington Street, which is my next-door cousin's house, I cut the grass in front, in front of the sidewalk every week. So, and also, I grew up in Cumberland, but I would come visit my uncle all the time, go up in the woods and play, you know, he would take me up in his golf cart, he had big gardens, and it was awesome, you know, it was a great time, we had fun. But that, that land is gone now, the garden can't be taken care of anymore, and the idea of bringing in affordable housing for people to live in now what is just woods, to me, I think is excellent. I respect what you said about taking care of the people that can't afford nice housing. You know, I grew up in an area, I have to live on my uncle because I can't afford nice housing. You know, it's very difficult in this day and age, and I think it's a great idea for a project, for the fact that there are going to be the big homes, that there are going to be the homes, but there are also going to be homes that other people can get that have a lesser income. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers? Any other counselors? Okay, anybody out there in Zoom land? Is that a hand up?
Somebody named Matt.
Matt? Matt, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Awesome. I am Matt Garlock, I live at 4 Taft, right next to the future sewer line. Just had a couple comments and questions, if the questions will be entertained. So I was really happy to hear that this is the same presentation that went before the planning board, because I was worried that some of the adjustments that were agreed upon hadn't been made. I'll just note a couple of them, so the request paperwork lists our address next to the parcel, the parcel ID is correct, but the address is not. They said that they were going to update that, so hope that that's still the plan to update that. And then the sewer line, if you look on sheet nine, shows the sewer line following the dirt road along the power lines, and then down along that little strip of land for two Taft Drive, towards Taft Drive. The plans currently show it cutting through a small group of trees right at the end, rather than following the natural clearing, like fifteen feet, you know, to the west. The developers had agreed to, you know, follow that, because, you know, saves them work, they don't have to rip down trees and plant new ones, and it, you know, keeps those mature trees for us, so thank you, and I hope that that's still the plan. One thing I had a question on, and have been able to look into a little more since the planning board, was, you know, that, the landscape back there, like Karen said, you know, like six percent grade, I think the plans say the sewer will follow like an eight percent grade, and that's under sandy loam soil along like existing dirt roads where, you know, every weekend you got dirt bikes and four-wheelers going by. So I'm just, I'm asking about, you know, what mitigations will be employed to maintain like that trench stability, the sewer joint stability, reduce any settling under the pipe, you know, anything to prevent the erosion and the integrity of that pipe from being compromised and, you know, it all rolling downhill. And then the drawings also indicate that, and all disturbed earth slopes would be stabilized with vegetative cover. I was wondering if that applies to the existing trails, or if the trails would just remain dirt and be, you know, ridden over by the dirt bikes and four-wheelers?
Do you want to?
Oh, sure, I can answer through the chair. So first, yes, we do still intend to make those revisions. They both make sense, and it's the right thing to do. But also, when it comes to erosion stabilization on those trails, we will provide erosion control barriers through there. All of that will be reviewed through the ZBA and peer reviewed, is my understanding. So there'll be a third-party engineering firm double-checking our work, making sure that there won't be any stormwater erosion control problems. And for the dirt bike, whether the trails remain dirt, the intent is to return it to the current state, so that it's, the only addition that you see there is a couple manholes coming down the trail, so that we don't alter the utility access or, you know, the community access to that area.
Okay, are there any concerns like with utility access of, you know, larger vehicles riding over, you know, that dirt road with, you know, how far down the sewer's going to be buried? And, you know, just over time, you know, I imagine, you know, in the next couple of years, yeah, probably nothing happens, but, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, has that sandy soil, you know, moved, eroded, settles?
Yeah, so, so construction in those conditions happens all the time, and again, that would be part of the peer review, there'd be, you know, qualified peer review engineers, you don't have to take our word for it, there will be an independent engineer, plus the town engineer will have an opportunity to weigh in and offer any comments or concerns, but, you know, the intent is to provide a stable design that's not going to cause problems for the neighbors.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the, that two Taft Drive, you know, that runs alongside our property, it's currently unmaintained, is the, is the intent to continue that being unmaintained? Or will, is there going to be any, any kind of improvement made?
I think the only useful purpose for us with that land is the sewer easement access, and so I think the intent would be to maintain the area over the sewer line to maintain access, but there wouldn't be any improvements proposed to that area unless agreed upon per discussions with the ZBI.
Okay. And currently, you know, the sidewalk there is, you know, under a few inches of sand that has, you know, over the years, come down. I'm just, is it possible to put in some kind of barrier so that, you know, I imagine when you do the construction to get to the manhole cover, you'll probably clear off the sidewalk there, but just to put up some kind of barrier to reduce, you know, the more sand coming down onto that sidewalk, because, you know, people get to our property and then they just go out into the road or cross the street, because, you know, it's just sand from, from there to almost the end of Taft.
Yeah, we'd be happy to look into providing something like that, it could be something as simple as a piece of exposed vertical curb that provides a, you know, permanent barrier that can just be periodically cleaned out if it's becoming close to overtopping or, or some other mechanism, but yeah, I'll add to my list of revisions.
Cool, that would be awesome, thank you. And then just the final question, so assuming a nominal timeline from here, when do you anticipate construction beginning, and how long do you anticipate it lasting?
That's hard.
That's a tough question.
Yeah.
Are we talking on the order of like weeks, months, years from now?
So I would expect the remaining process to not be drawn out, but there's a significant amount of work left, so if, if we receive a favorable review from the town council tonight, the next step, as he said, would be applying to the mass housing for our project eligibility letter. Once we receive that, we can then file with the ZBA. ZBA will have to review our plans, there'll be a back and forth with peer review, and any, any new comments or concerns the ZBA members have. And so that, that could be, you know, I would say, you know, months in the making, and, you know, ballparking, probably not starting construction any sooner than probably this spring, but I can't confirm to that timeline, it depends on how things play out.
Of course, of course, but I appreciate it, and I also appreciate, you know, how accommodating and reasonable you've been, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution A simple majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thank you so much. That's a lot.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we adjourn for five minutes?
Uh, we'll take a four-minute recess.
Did you just take a recess?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the council.
So, as I think it was stated earlier, you know, Friendly 40Bs, these are the ones, first ones we've ever done. So, we've just done three of them. The one that y'all just approved was kind of already in the pipeline, I think, when we heard a lot of concerns from the community about Friendly 40Bs. In between those, we had, at a staff level, had altered the policy to take away the ability for someone to file for a Friendly 40B that was a large apartment complex, okay? And so, given the concern from the community about apartments and larger complexes in development, the policy that's before you tonight mirrors what we had as a staff. But I think, as I say in the memo, you know, the council may or may not want to consider adopting a policy yourself because ultimately, the council are the legislative body that are going to handle these. I think this is okay. This is an evolution. We started off with a process. We got a lot of feedback. We changed it. We've still received feedback and concerns from the community. But I think the legislative body, in my opinion, and you obviously do not have to agree, should be taking some sort of stance, I think, on behalf of the community on where we stand, on whether we're going to accept Friendly 40B applications in the future. Right now, there's none in the pipeline. So, it's, this is like a nice time after three. You had a, we asked for for sale. We had one that was for sale just a little while ago. The council can amend what's on the screen and in the packet. The council can also do nothing. The council can also not accept any Friendly 40B applications at all. We've limited these here in the policy to for-sale only. Obviously, we can't do anything that's by right in zoning. We'd have to change the town zoning, but that's okay. I think this council has done a great job over the years with all the studies we've done and changing a lot of the town bylaws. That actually did de-densify some of the areas uptown and I think did address a lot of the community concerns. So, you know, I think moving forward, this group's going to have to make a decision. And any future council can change the policy.
Sure.
But I think where the community is at from the legislative body's perspective on do we want to accept more applications or do we not? And if so, if we do want to take applications, are there other criteria or are there other types of development that we should encourage? Or are there other avenues that y'all want to put in the policy here? So, this is kind of an open discussion and it gives you an opportunity, I think, to deal with the many comments that I know hundreds of emails or dozens of emails we've all gotten about every Friendly 40B that's been taken up. So, that's a little bit of lead-in. Obviously, we're happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Okay. For discussion, Councilor Frangello.
Yeah. Lots of thoughts on this one. I've missed one meeting in my time on council, and it was the one where we discussed the staff policy, which, just for transparency, I was strongly opposed to. And I wrote an email at the time saying so. To my understanding, this particular agenda item was brought forth perhaps in response to emails, but most directly in response to testimony of individuals who had come before us. One of those individuals was asking that we evaluate not only our subsidized housing inventory, but our actual subsidized, our true subsidized housing inventory, which, you know, as we all know, in a rental space, if 25% are affordable, you get to count all toward your SHI. That's great for us and we want to stay above the 10% and I don't think anyone is saying that, you know, we should argue that we shouldn't be. And if we actually want to have a true evaluation of how many units in Franklin are actually deed-restricted affordable, that would be a policy to consider and maybe even setting a target for what share of Franklin units we want to be actually affordable. I believe, based on the math, I was going through presentations, but I think that our actual or true is closer to 3% or 4%, not, you know, the 10%. And so, what share of Franklin units, if we, you know, do we want our community to have deed-restricted affordable? And that was one of the policy ideas that came forward. And the other one was, well, maybe instead of having these arbitrary yes, no, rental, no rental, maybe it's a much more complex calculation that goes into our consideration of a Friendly 40B. And another individual had asked for us to consider a possible criteria by which to evaluate 40B, among them having a preference for ownership over rental units. My fear in this, especially now that we're considering codifying the rule, is fears about choice. Choice for ourselves and choice for individuals. Choice for ourselves. All this does is handicap our ability to make decisions, right? This is saying that we won't accept, we won't even consider rental units. We're allowed at any point, every single rental unit, we can say, nope, we actually don't support that. But at least we have the opportunity to hear the possibility of a project coming forward that is beneficial for the community and surely we could recognize that there'd be at least, you know, the possibility of the destruction of a rental space. We saw it with the St. John's property. I think that's, you know, for the most part, got a lot of support, which had deep affordability, which was within walking distance, on church property, setback, you know, all the things that we look for, and, you know, it's all about. So, it's taking away our choice. And more importantly, I would argue, it's taking away the choice of individuals. Housing affordability is not just a matter of having deed-restricted affordable units, but it's having choices for different offerings. Who prefers rental units over ownership units? It's those that find it difficult to maintain stable credit, that find it difficult to maintain a stable income in order to pay down mortgage. Who are those individuals? Those are elders. Those are low-income families. Those are young adults just starting their careers. Those are people with disabilities. And so, by, you know, categorically saying no to even considering rental units, we are taking away possible affordable options for the very people that I think we want to be welcoming in this community. I find that this policy is in direct contrast to the goals of the Housing Production Plan, which include increase the number of housing units affordable for Franklin's very low-income, low-income and modern-income adults. I find it to be in direct contrast to the community survey, which said that the number one aspect of the community that was lowest rated by far was the availability of affordable housing, affordable quality housing. The top priorities that the town should focus on for future housing development by far was affordability, even more than preserving the town's character. I find this to be in direct contrast to the master plan, which says to evaluate the Friendly 40B policy and make sure that it's in line with the housing needs identified within the master plan and to expand Chapter 40B affordable housing stock. I find it to be in direct contrast to the staff-named goals within the Housing Production Plan, which includes provide the appropriate mix of housing alternatives and support development of housing opportunities for different types of households. I have strong objections. I don't support the policy as currently drafted. If, for some reason, we're feeling that this is something that needs to be done, I would, I have language that would amend it to be prefer instead of accept, so that we don't take away the possibility of at least considering a rental. So, we can still be transparent for future developers to say, hey, we're looking for these types of projects, but to take away our ability to consider them, I think, should be a non-starter as, you know, town leaders.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Councilor Hamblin? Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
I didn't.
Okay.
I was thinking.
You're thinking. All right. Any other councilors? Councilor Delorko.
Well, first of all, it's not affordable. I don't know why we're saying affordable. It's $2,400 a month is not affordable. That's, I think they, I mean, I do think we need affordable housing, but I get aggravated every time they say it's affordable. There's a lot of people out there that can't afford $2,400 a month. It's crazy. It's middle-class at best. At best, it's middle-class. And I've seen it with the kids that, Kobe, I coached kids your age. How many of your kids that you know come up to you and say, I just can't afford it. I just can't afford the living? And those are the kids that, you know, I coached and stuff and you grew up with. So, you know. You know, I mean, we need affordable. It's just, it gets me so aggravated when they say it's affordable when it really is not affordable. And that's what drives me crazy, you know? And I know it's not, it's not us here, it's on the state level. You know, I know that's what you're going to say, Jamie. It's not us here, it's on the state level. And something should be done there. You know what I mean? It just gets me so mad, is I see so many kids just struggling and it gets me so mad. That's all. That's all I can say.
And I think everybody, everybody in this council agrees, I'm sure. Comments from Councilor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the way that it's written because I think it's directly, directly listening to the, to the people that have been loudly complaining about the direction that we've been going as a town for the last few years. I think it doesn't solve the problem, but it does show that we're listening. I agree with Councilor Delorko that nothing about these reduced rental prices are affordable. They're certainly not, these apartments that have gone up are not attracting seniors. They're not attracting low-income individuals. That's a whole nother category of low-income housing that there's a desperate shortage of here and everywhere else, right? We're not solving the issue of our young people need a place to go, or our seniors need a place to go, or our single moms that are working, struggling to pay rent need a place to go with more expensive apartments. That is just not happening. So, I do think a revision like this that says to developers that, okay, we've more than met our threshold, we have lots of housing options, we're very blessed as a town, we have a wide range for our people to choose from, I think we've more than done our share to satisfy the MBTA communities' rule. I think the state should be very happy with us as a town. And I think it, I think it will send a message to our constituents that we listened. And that's what, that's what is very, very important to me because I do think there needs to be some healing. The housing issue was at the forefront, at the very forefront of the debate that we just went through as a community with the override. It was discussed over and over and over and over again in every meeting, in every driveway conversation, in every private conversation, in every email, in every social media post. And it drove, people may not agree with me, but I know that it drove a lot of people to a no vote because they were angry. The number of people that said to me, I can afford to pay more and I can afford to support the override, but I'm not going to because something's got to make you people listen. Many times did we hear that privately and at the senior center privately in those conversations, a lot. So, I'd like to be able to move past it. I'd like to be able to say, we drew a line in the sand. We have these projects going forward and they are what they are. And we now have made a decision and we're listening and we're going forward and we're trying to direct not just development, but staff and move in a way that the community can support, instead of 100% just slapping them in the face and saying, we know better than you and we're not going to listen. Because I don't think that that sits right with most people that we seem to talk to. So, I'm in support of the language change, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Any other, Councilor Sheridan?
Yeah, I just disagree a little bit. I don't remember slapping anybody in the face. I mean, if you disagree, then doesn't mean slap in the face. Also, I disagree that by definition, if something's 8% market rate, maybe it's not affordable, it's more affordable. So, the solution, what, just build it all market rate and make it nothing, even more affordable, is all it means, all semantics it gets. But if, so if something's cheaper, $2,400 a month is probably close to what my wife and I pay for our mortgage now, for our house downtown. We're both public school teachers. I mean, it wouldn't have seemed, it was a lot more than it was, but that's affordable for two teachers, public school teachers. Also, I think both my parents and my in-laws, when they both started out, they rented apartments. My wife and I started out and rented apartments because when you first start out as a young, working-class family, you may not have the down payment, but you have, so renting a place is an option. You might not know if you like the town or the schools, but renting a place is an option. You don't have to commit a huge 30-year mortgage or something like that. So, allowing more rentals is an option. And by allowing more rentals, you get people more choice. And by definition, the more, even if it doesn't help as much as people want, and since everybody's here, maybe we should, is there a way to get real low-income housing?
Yeah.
Then if everybody seems to be far back, maybe we should look into that.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's a really good question. So, the St. John's project was really a big piece of that. And I think that's why the town, all of you, I think almost everybody I know, other than the Butters, really did support that project quite a bit. I know there were some people in that neighborhood that were vehemently opposed to it, but I honestly believe a lot of that was just because it was generally within their neighborhood and their area and they had concerns about traffic or whatnot. But that project is the piece that's mandated by state law, and don't quote me on this, it's like 30, 40, and 50% of area-wide median income. I couldn't remember if it's 40, 50, 60, but I think it's 30, 40, 50. That is the lower-income housing that is going to provide for a lot of our, you know, first-year teachers, librarians, DPW staff, other people. The audience that Councilor Cormier-Ledger spoke about a moment ago, the single mother, people working two jobs, that housing is what's going to support those people. They're already in our community. But also, it took a church to do that. The second piece, I would say, is what makes this really hard, and Councilor Frangello referenced this, is banks are just tightening up even more and anytime there's an affordable requirement, lending becomes a big problem. Affordability is completely defined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think when Rep. Roy and Senator Rousher here on September 3rd, I think everybody on this panel, and we used to have a conversation with them about Chapter 40B income regulations, because affordability is not actually the decision on this policy. The decision is actually about housing types and size of housing developments. Affordability, you know, I'm going to piggyback, there's nothing affordable almost in Massachusetts. Like, this state is one of the, one of the most unaffordable places to live in the country. And affordability, to everybody's point, is impossible because our state is such a high-cost state on everything. We just went over a median house price of $1 million just this past month in Massachusetts, right? So, the stock is low, the price is going up, sales have plummeted. And so, we have very little control, if any, over the affordability piece. And I think that's why, you know, that project on Pleasant Street was so popular. With the rental issue, I think between the two Friendly 40Bs as well as Pleasant Street, the St. John's project, that's almost 700 rentals right there. I think the rental piece, and that's not by right. I mean, somebody can still go to the planning board and apply for 18 units of a rental complex somewhere in downtown. So, it's not like rentals are going to go away. But 700 rentals is a lot of rentals to go through. And I think, I think to Councilor Cormier-Ledger's point, I think it's just, I think we've all heard it, it's just, where's the balance in here maybe a little bit about the housing types as well as the housing size? But in terms of affordability and in terms of low-income rules, I think this, we have to have a conversation with Rep. Roy and Senator Rousher about this on September 3rd. Because they're the only ones that really are our representatives that can change these rules. And oh, by the way, Chapter 40B has never been amended since 1969. So, there was a statewide ballot question 10 years ago. It got crushed to repeal the whole statute. It was 5842 against repealing the statute, which froze the legislature from making any tweaks. Well, that was over 10 years now and we're in a new housing crisis. And I think this is a conversation about affordability, your issues about the quantity of dollars you're paying. I think this is a conversation our state lawmakers have to start getting engaged in.
All set, Pat? Councilor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought a little bit now. So, personally, like, I think we should have more lower-income place apartments for people. I feel like, you know, Councilor Frangello, what he said, I'm like, I really feel that in my heart. When we talk about what the affordable, the actual affordables are in the town, I think we should really start thinking about, like, what is, if the actual percentage is only 4%, maybe if we, if we think of ourselves as a welcoming community, maybe we should, we need to start, re-shift, shift that in the way we think about it to what is the actual affordables. But I also agree with Councilor Cormier-Ledger that a lot of things came up during the override. We've heard a lot of people complain about what we are doing, but that, not that we're just, okay, we're not listening to them, that's what people say, but it's like, okay, well, what do we really want? Like, what is going on? Who do, who do we represent? While we sit here, we represent the whole town. And it's okay, Councilor Frangello. And so, like, a lot of times, I put what I think I would want aside to what the whole town needs and wants. And so, I really, I really hesitate to codify that language, but maybe that's what we need to do to, like, really say, okay, maybe we can add some, like, can we prefer lower affordable units or something like that, like at the church? And maybe we can, like, I don't know, add that in or something, because to me, that's what we really need now. We have the affordable with the capital A, but we need affordable with the lower, the lower A. But I, it's really difficult, right? Because I believe in housing for people, but I also believe that I represent more than just me. And so, I guess, I guess that's all I need to say right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Any other councilors? Attorney Sorel.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the purpose, the context of this resolution. It is dealing, what you're saying is valid, policy discussion, reasonable minds can disagree. However, this resolution is crafted directly in response to a specific portion of regulations of the Department of Housing.
Livable Communities.
Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. This is a specific program, so-called LIPS, local initiative programs, so-called Friendly 40Bs. And so, this is a guidance written under that policy. So, you just have to take it baggage-baggage in that context.
Thank you. So, seeing no other councilors, please, Max, name and address, please.
Max Marangello, 127 Central Park Terrace. I had a question for Attorney Sorel through the chair. Can this, can the town council right now amend this policy resolution so that the income level is 50% rather than 80% if they allow the units to go through the process?
No, again, as was said, affordability is defined by state statutes and regulations. It's only the housing types that's in play.
Okay. So, there's no, there's, you can't look into traffic, because I thought we were setting criteria that we look at. There's no way to preempt, there's no other, there's no other way to talk about traffic or whether it's senior housing or whether there's, you know, more units than required by law. There's no way to look, have a more granular policy under this program?
The only way to do that would be to allow the application and then during the application process, you have those discussions.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That, Mr. Chairman, first of all, he's correct. That's certainly one avenue, right? I mean, part of the issue is, is you're coming in here, you know, on any of these and you're having a detailed discussion on something at a meeting that, you know, oftentimes at the planning board may take multiple nights, right? So, there's only so much time this body has. Can the, can the policy establish out a set of criteria, you know, like you sent me earlier? Yes. But I think, but I think we're moving away a little bit from also what we've heard from the public, which is, you know, if you add up and say hypothetically, 121 Grove Street gets built, right? You know, it's already on the SHI, but it could fall off in a year if that doesn't move forward and they hit financial problems. If Stobarts, even in any iteration, even if it was at the 264 units, but even the wetlands in the river over there are going to be very challenging for that to get permitted, and there's a potential that that unit count comes down. And even with a fair amount of market-rate housing that's going to get built, like maybe down here, or maybe some small subdivisions and a couple of units around town, you're going to be likely over your 10% for the foreseeable future because you've already got enough of the numerator approved or at least going through the process, including tonight, 39 units if that gets built. See, I also believe the market-rate units shouldn't count towards affordable units. But this is, but this is, but this is, but this is, but even on the rental, all those units go through and you're charging market rate, but our SHI says affordability. And I think that's the Councilor Frangello's point of how many are really affordable. Well, then affordability is in the eye of the beholder. So, at some point, the public wants more, but also, there's a lot of people in town that don't want more. And so, how do you thread that balance? And I think, I think right now, just my, only my opinion, you know, we've heard a lot of very raucous comments from people about development, their fears in this community and whatnot. I think if you're going to go to the criteria level and you're going to really establish out some sort of method or matrix, that needs a lot more time to develop. It needs to be very carefully drafted. I did share Max's ideas with the staff. There's obviously a lot of comments. Tonight's not the night to have it. You could choose, Mr. Chairman, you're right, just accept the applications and that council at that time can referee this criteria. I kind of think you've done that already. Each one of you hears from people in the community and you vote the way that, you know, you're hearing from the community. Well, that's criteria too. If you want to dig down into a complicated set of rules, that's a much more, obviously, omnibus conversation that you guys are going to have.
Mr. Chairman. And maybe that's something that could be put onto goals.
Right. Great point.
Mr. Chairman. Put into our goals going forward.
That's right.
Yes.
So, I agree with Jamie. We're all tired, it's late. That's why I think we should refer this to the Economic Development Subcommittee. They're the ones who should really take a look at this, dive deep and really take a closer look at this, because it, this is kind of thrust in in this really long meeting. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, I really think we should take a closer look in committee rather than voting on this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anybody in council chambers? Please, name and address.
That was a funny look. Mark Mina Kelly, 31 Longfellow Drive.
That was headed to Jamie.
So was I. Mr. Chairman and councilors, and administration, and attorney. I was one of the people that spoke up, looking for us to try to move forward and make some progress on affordable housing and the metrics that we use and so forth. And I was really excited several months ago, Chairman Mercer, when you said, yeah, we're going to add it, we're going to add it to the agenda this summer. And I have to say, I was underwhelmed when I read what was on the agenda tonight to cover the 40B topic. I, I was expecting and hoping for something closer to what I was asking for. And, and Councilor Delorko, I don't think anybody can disagree with you that affordability is pretty far away from what the state has defined as affordable. That being said, though, I don't think we can throw up our arms and just say, forget it. It doesn't make any sense because it, what it, it doesn't make any sense, because what affordable rates do is it does reduce what would otherwise be a market value, right? So it brings some level of affordability. I don't think we should throw out the baby with the bathwater, I think we should accept what we can get right now from the state and try to do more, and try to go beyond. And I think the development behind the church on Pleasant Street is a great example of that. My requests earlier this year were based upon the fact that we have this subsidized housing index, the SHI, that the state says, you've got to be at 10% or above. And we, over the months and months that I've sat here and listened to conversations, not only in this meeting, but in, in the planning boards and the zoning board of appeals, that 10% number is used, seems to be used as a, a goal line that says, we've made it, so we're done. We've made it, we don't have to do anything more for affordability. And so, my request to all of you several months ago was, I think the town needs somebody to decide what should we be shooting for. Not, not what's, not what's the bare minimum that we should have for affordability, but what does the town of Franklin want to provide for homes for people from all kinds of backgrounds and incomes? What do we want to be a Franklin for? Who do we want to be a Franklin for? And not just meet the, what the state says is a 10% level, but let's decide, I was hoping that this body would debate and decide, what do we want our goal to be, so that the entire town, all the boards and all the officials can have a consistent goal for what we are targeting and shooting for. And that's not in this at all. Type of housing is here, you could debate whether or not it should mandate one or the other, but for me, I'm totally disappointed that we're not really shooting at what the number is. What is our target for the town? And then, at a subsequent meeting, I brought up this idea of actual subsidized housing inventory. What, to Kobe's point, what is the actual number of state-defined affordable units in the town of Franklin? Having this 10% number that's based on all of the market-based units that are in the rental units in addition to the affordable units, to me, is a smokescreen. Maybe, maybe it was designed to encourage communities to do this when it was first introduced, but it tells us nothing. Knowing that we're at 10.86% or 13.83% or whatever the current number is actually today on this date, knowing what that number is tells us nothing about how many affordable units we have in the town of Franklin. Somebody like Kobe did has to dig into all the numbers and count only the affordable units to really know how much affordability we have in the town. Now, I think the town council has the authority to define our own target in the way that we want to, and then the number that we want it to be for the town of Franklin. I'm hopeful that you maybe push off the vote on this particular topic tonight, or take on an additional task of coming up with something that the town can use as a realistic indicator of how we're doing in affordability and how we can do better in affordability. And I, as I always do, I always appreciate the time and the effort that you all put in to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, any, Jamie, anything to add?
Really quickly, to Mark's point earlier, Chapter 40B, and the lawyer alluded to this earlier, are dozens of different avenues for housing development. So St. John's, for example, gets, because they're at 30, 40, 50%, they go to the top of the line at the state at mass housing and get an approval without really anything at the local level, which is good. So there's nothing the town council can do about that, we just need more property owners to want to do that. But you're not going to probably get that, because many developers are just not going to do that, because there's not as much money and it's more difficult. If you added in Franklin Ridge, and you added in St. John's, and you added in Stobarts, even add a 10% reduction of the units as they go through permitting, you know, you're going to end up getting, if those were all on the books today, if those were all on the books today or this year, you're going to be eclipsing 17, 18, 19, 20% affordable by SHI. So I say to advocates or others, what bullseye target do you want? Most towns are nowhere near that. And there is, because as Mark alluded to at another meeting, the state now sees this as a statewide problem, which is true. So now they're putting additional layers and taking away local control with MBTA communities and ADUs, all good laws, but, you know, there's, there's just this inconvenient truth of the fact that this state is really, really unaffordable for a lot of people. We have designed our communities around that, and it's very hard, and these are issues that are going to keep bubbling up. But I would say, yes, you could add in a goal of a percentage. One, you could add in a goal, maybe not tonight, but you could add in a percentage and say, well, we want to be at 15% of the state law. Well, that's a laudable goal, and we're probably pretty close to that. But we're never going to get to where Counselor Frangello is talking about, about what is actual affordable for people who are living here until state law changes. And until state law changes and regulations change, we're just dogs chasing our tails, hoping and thinking that this is going to get better by just overbuilding, and somehow the money and the prices are going to come down with supply and demand economics. It just isn't going to happen. So affordability is not the question tonight, although I respect it, it's really about housing types and sizes. And I do agree with Mark and many others, these are issues that every community is struggling with, we can certainly talk about it more, but, but I think we've also heard from a lot of people in the town that don't want any more, and that's hard to balance. But we already have a lot. So we're not really doing anything that already isn't above, well above. I think someone said it earlier, I think Secretary Augustus, who's going to be here in October for a visit, is exceptionally proud of the way that Franklin has done a lot of stuff here. I know that from talking to him, I know Counselor Hamblin has and others. We're in good shape.
You think he'd support this?
What?
You think he'd support this?
I don't know, I think, as a city manager, well, no, Counselor Frangello, with all due respect, as a city manager of Worcester for 10 years, he's going to look on the other side, and he's going to say, wait a minute, there's feedback coming in from multiple routes that have a conflict that are dividing the community. We've already approved countless amounts of housing developments in this community. Would he support this policy? Maybe not, but also, if he heard the feedback that the community was bringing forward, he very well would maybe understand this is a balance that needs to happen. So I don't know whether he would just reject this. I think he would also respect the fact that a lot of people in town are very, very upset about this, and somewhere along the lines, we need to cool, cool down the community emotions on this. This doesn't cancel out any other housing projects, but I think he would, he's been very supportive of Franklin Ridge, he gave us eight and a half million dollars in federal and state tax credits and money, you know, I think, you know, but I think, you know, those are projects we've worked really hard on as a municipality. No other municipality is working on things like Franklin Ridge. I mean, I put an exceptional amount of time into this project, you know, these are hard-fought victories. But also, if you had all these on the rolls, you'd be getting near 20% affordable. So what's next, 25, 30? Like, I don't know where the goalpost is. And I think, I agree with Mark, at some point, we need a goalpost, but affordability is not, it's, a lot of this we can't do alone, you know? So I think this is a conversation we need to extend into Rep Roy and Senator Rousch in September.
Thank you, Jamie. Any further discussion? Seeing that, please, raise your hand quick.
I'm tired, sorry. Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia, two quick points, Mr. Chair, thank you. I fear that by passing this, it restricts our future capabilities, which may we regret. I also fear that, I'm not sure we're really resolving the issues that were out there. Certainly, listening was one aspect, but there's an aspect of it, at least from my observation, is that some of the processes, particularly around the notifications, particularly around the 40Bs, that led to the outrage, because there were breaks in the process, and the process was not fully understood. So we still need to do a communication piece, we still need to enhance the processes, and at least, there was another suggestion, to put this back to something like an EDC for more robust discussion around this, because based on kind of a head count, it's not going to be an overwhelming vote, and I fear that it's just going to set you up for our behalf not to be able to deal with what the real issues are, communication and understanding of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend.
Absolutely, you have the right.
Motion to amend, and I'll talk through the language, Jamie, if you're able to.
I'm doing it right here.
That'd be great, if you're on like revision mode instead of editing, but.
Suggestion?
Yeah, it's a suggestion, in that top right corner. Either way, my motion to amend would be to change the word "accept" to "prefer," instead of saying the town is not accepting, say the town is less likely to accept. And in the next paragraph, instead of saying the town council will only consider, say the town council will strongly prefer. What I'm doing here is, man, bending on my morals and pushing against what I think is already affordable things to be doing in the face of people asking for us for more affordable housing, but at least, at least asking that we retain the opportunity to consider projects as opposed to outright banning such projects. And I would accept a friendly motion, if you're interested, to add a line about, among rental-based housing projects, the town will prefer applications that provide deeper housing affordability options than the minimum 80% area income requirement. But I think that's not.
I don't think we can do that.
I don't think we can do that.
No.
Because it's step-by-state statute, so even if you accepted something at 60%, they, they're going to reject it, because it's codified in state law.
I don't think that's true. I think that 80% is a maximum, but lower still counts to your SHI.
Yeah, I, I, I would concur, but again, the context, as I said earlier, the context and the driver here is the so-called subsidized housing inventory, which is part of the regulatory implementation of 40B. That's what you're addressing, and that's the playing field. You can do all kinds of other creative things, which are wholly outside this, there's nothing stopping you, but you may or may not get credit on the, on the state's affordable, subsidized housing inventory for the units, because they don't meet with their process.
Right. Sure, but deeper than, I mean, they have plenty of precedence, but we're getting credit for all of the St. John's properties.
You can go deeper, but, you know, the realistic thing, the, the things that are not getting spoken are the, the whole environment right now, the governmental, the economic, that's why these process, these really affordable with us, you know, that you could recognize as affordable are not getting built.
Mark, I'm not asking for your, for your testimony, the question is, can we say deeper than 80%? And the answer is yes, we could say deeper. None of this we have to do.
Right.
All of this is saying, hey, if you come before us, here's what we're going to consider. And we could easily can say, we're going to consider, you know, traffic, and we're going to consider, you know, fire safety. We can say whatever we want, because all this is, is saying, this is a friendly 40B process, if you want our support in a friendly 40B process, here are the things that we would want to consider. Surely, we can say, we want to consider more than 80%. I'm not saying, but it sounds like we're not.
Do you want to put that as part of your amendment?
Amendment.
Amendment.
I guess, would, were people interested with like, is that preferable aspect?
You have to make the amendment first.
You've got to make the amendment.
But that puts the First Amendment at risk.
Yeah.
Or you could do two amendments.
Two amendments.
Yeah. I'll maintain the current proposed amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the amendment.
I just want, sorry.
Yeah, Counselor Chandler had his hand up. Go ahead.
So now we're back to the original amendment?
Yep.
What's up there?
No. We're voting on. We're voting on the amendment, which is what you see up there in red.
Okay, I want to keep, the people have spoken, I mean, they are, I mean, this is, it's, we're going to go right back to where the override will never pass again, just, I mean, look at what Stobarts did. Please, you've got to listen to the people, I'm begging you.
Okay. Counselor Frangello.
I'll see you in a second.
There is a motion.
The people have never spoken for us to not have the option to consider rental properties. I don't think any of you have had someone say, actually, you should adopt a friendly 40B policy that prevents our ability to even consider a rental. That's never what the people have considered, what the people have spoken. In fact, we know that, we just did a massive community survey and paid a lot of money for them to tell us that 65% of them set the highest housing priority, by far the most of all the options, more than environment, more than community character, more than all the other things you care about, was affordability. So those people have spoken. It doesn't matter, none of them have spoken to say, we shouldn't even have the option. If you don't want to support another rental project, don't support another rental project. Say no every single time, don't take away our ability to consider that project, because we just said we're proud of St. John's, we just said we're proud of Franklin Ridge. Guess what? Those were, you might say that they're rare, the few exceptions of, you know, okay, that rental project wasn't that bad. I'm saying, give us the ability to at least consider that. You know, I would fully support your ability to say no to them, I just don't want to take away our ability to even consider them.
Counselor Sheridan?
We have represented democracy. We're not direct democracy, we need the pack of media.
He started speaking. Okay, I'll give it back to you. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. I think we should have, go back to our original amendment, the people have spoken, I don't care what you say, you know, you're forcing a lot of stuff down people's throats, there's going to be a whole new council, probably, okay? And, you know, we should probably even let them vote, we should probably push this off for two months.
Let's do that.
I'd be okay with it.
Right, so when you get rid of me, then you don't have to vote on it. All right, listen, I got a little, because I, because he took over, but I think we should vote on the original, I don't agree with his amendment, that's all.
Then just vote on the amendment.
Okay.
That's enough.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, the vote will come on the amendment as you see in front of you in red. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
The noes have it, motion amendment fails. Okay.
We have the original motion.
Counselor Frangello.
If we're still in discussion?
For the original amendment, yes.
On the original.
On the original. Sure, if you want.
I can feel the tea leaves going this way. The only thing that's being forced is a new policy that you're adopting to force your hand to not even consider. The only forcing is in the language. This, if you care about housing affordability at all, don't take away your ability to consider an affordable housing project. Consider, not accept, not support, consider an affordable housing project. This is a made-up policy to take away your ability. You should be mad, as a town leader, to say, I am no longer going to have the ability to deliberate, I'm no longer going to have the ability to listen to my constituents and consider whether a project is good for the town. If you are at all support the possibility of affordable housing, this is in direct contrast to those goals. I mean, this is directly limiting your ability to even consider housing affordability. I think it's the, the single biggest embarrassment of a vote I've had to take in my town, in my time in town council. This is in direct contrast to the goals of the master plan, of the housing production plan, of the community survey that we heard, and whatever you want, every single one of you says, I support housing affordability, this is in direct contrast to your ability to even consider housing affordability. I would make a motion to table this policy for further deliberation, to at least deliberate on it. on it at a later time, have more time to discuss.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Non-debatable. I believe it's non-debatable.
So we have a motion and a second to table.
Please take this up at a different time and talk about it more. This is wrong, and I don't think it supports what you guys say you stand for.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling this for a future meeting and future discussion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Give us the chance to talk about it, guys. Give us the chance to talk about it.
It's non-debatable.
Non-debatable.
Cormier Ledger.
No.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
No.
Frangello. To table.
Yes.
Legary.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Delarco.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
To be tabled to a later date.
Tabled to a later date. And we will put it on a future agenda, and if we need to kick it back to EDC, we'll kick it back to EDC.
Understood.
And come back with a proposal that works and makes more sense. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is, God, I jumped around. What did I miss?
Twenty-five.
Thirty?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-929, creation of the Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 185, Section 4, districts enumerated, referral to the planning board. Jamie?
So, Mr. Chairman, the next six votes all relate to this one issue, just so everybody knows.
Okay. Clerk will read the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-929, creation of Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 185, Section 4, districts enumerated. Be enacted by the Franklin Town Council. At Chapter 185, Code of Town of Franklin, hereby amended by adding text at Section 185-4, districts enumerated as follows. Add to the end of Section 185-4A, a line stating, Crossing Neighborhood CN, add to the end of Section 185-4C, a paragraph stating 16, the Crossing Neighborhood District CN is intended primarily as a diverse mixed-use economically and culturally rich district. A strong emphasis is placed on pedestrian-friendly design, encouraging a wide range of residential, commercial, cultural, and entertainment uses. Limited light industrial uses may be permitted. Single-family, two-family, multi-family, and apartment residential uses are allowed. The zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with Franklin Home Rule Charter, Massachusetts Journal Act, Chapter 48, Section 5.
Refer to the planning board.
Refer amendment 25-929 to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, Counselor Hamblin will speak to this, too. So, as part of the town council goals for the year, you know, we're going to create a, the Crossing Neighborhood District Zoning District. We've mirrored almost all of the downtown commercial, or C1, to bring over to this new district, obviously up on the map here. We all know where the crossing area is. There's a couple of parcels that are being added into this proposal. All six bylaws are referral to the planning board. At the corner of Washington, Arlington, and Union, there's a couple of commercial businesses that are on the, on that five corners that would be added in. And then, just off the screen, up at the top, up near Darling Court, East Street, and Sugar Beet, there's also a couple of parcels that'll get added in on that corner of East Street. Other than that, all of the other parcels are the exact same that are currently in the Commercial One District. The two big features here are, this district, the big piece is, there is a maximum height of three stories. So there is no special permit option in that neighborhood for a fourth or fifth story. I actually, we all believe, at least going through the EDC process and talking to stakeholders, that is the right height. Downtown Commercial, you can go four or five stories, but in the Crossing, given the character of that community, we agree that mandating a cap at three stories is really important to keep the character of that neighborhood where it's at. And I'm completely having a brain meltdown for a moment of what the other part was, Counselor Hamblin, that we agreed to at the EDC, that was a major change.
The park, the parking.
The parking.
Yeah.
So the one other change is, in Downtown Commercial, we got rid of the commercial-industrial requirement to have one parking space on-site for every 500 square feet of commercial space. In Downtown Commercial, we got rid of that to comply with MBTA communities. And by the way, there's plenty of parking downtown, there's like three or four lots, the town owns most of them, there's also private parking. But the difference is, we're leaving and proposing to keep that requirement in the Crossing, because there are no parking lots. And so, if you had a rehab of a site, a commercial site on Saxon or somewhere down there, and you had no on-site parking, but where's the parking going to go? On the streets, on the side streets, in the neighborhoods, and you're going to get complaints for sure, up and down all those areas, up Cottage East, Hutchinson, you know, all the way around the neighborhood.
West.
So, west.
The way he lives.
So those are the, those are the big pieces of this. Again, these all six are reporting these to the planning board for referral, and, you know, we did hear a lot of support from a variety of people throughout the process of supporting creating, you know, kind of a village district. You know, all these other communities throughout the state have these kind of unique, kind of village districts, and I think this is a really good idea, as did the EDC, who voted unanimously, and I believe there'll be support at the planning board as well. So, that's a very brief overview.
Amy? Amy's online.
Process.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, Amy.
Sorry, Amy.
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, so, thank you for inviting me, but this has been a long time planning. I know the staff has been working really hard on this, we've been working through EDC. Started back in January, February, that we started through Mel's idea and putting this together, crossing. And I think it's really important that we work together to make these changes, because I think it's really important to build up that area for us. We also met with EDC Chair Mel and Greg, the planning board chair, that was really good, trying to come up with ideas to put together different dynamics of it to make this work. It's the beginning, and, you know, it's like when they created the downtown crossing, I don't know when that was, like 20 years ago. And we make changes, but this is the beginning, and this is why I really hope that this can get pushed through and start for a new area of town to develop and bring growth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any, Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you indulge me for a minute.
I will, for sure.
So this is, I think Jamie and Amy both together have stated it, but I really think this is important to think about, like a mini downtown commercial area, right? And it's, but it's a neighborhood. The description of the, of what we are trying to build there, to me, is like the really exciting thing, right? It's like a walkable place, and it's, we are encouraging residential and mixed-use buildings down there. We also, we did amend one part of it, which was to allow for parking facilities through the planning board's special permit. That was not in the use tables, just because of the fact that people have a hard time with parking there, and we want to make sure that if somebody has the spot to build one, or to think about creating a parking facility that means like for over 10 cars, it's allowed. The planning board gets to control it and make sure it looks nice and it fits into the neighborhood. There's, one of the changes, the amendments that I didn't get to was, was on the Schedule of Lot Area Frontage, Yard, and Height Requirements, it's only, it's only, Chapter 185, Attachment Number 9. And maybe, Amy, since she's here tonight, she can ask the planning board to talk about this, so we don't have to, like, talk about it and vote again, but the way I look at it is that the, there's a note attached to the zoning district that says, permitted residential uses must observe requirements of General Residential 5 District. And that is only for single-family residents. And so, multiple resident houses, like a two-family or three-family, they don't have to require, they don't have to follow that requirement. So I think that it might hinder single-family housing being built, and I think that's not what we want, because General Resident 5, the zoning is bigger than downtown commercial. So I, I think we should, maybe Amy can have them, the planning board, discuss that, or maybe we could think about just removing that note, because we want to promote the ability for people to build single-family homes there, and that is sort of the way that, that area has historically been developed. And so, I think what we like about it is that it, like the history of it and the way it looks now, and so I think we need to promote the things that we like, and we can do that through zoning, and that, that should be something that we could, that would potentially be amended as well. Okay?
Okay.
I think I've just rolled everything together, all of the different votes, and it was a very long discussion, but it was very, a very good discussion.
Yeah.
It was, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Delarco.
Jamie, to you, to you, Mr. Chairman. What's the height restriction now? Is it four levels down there now?
A special permit?
I don't think it is.
It's not.
I think it's three.
So...
I don't think C1, I don't think, but there was some people who were thinking, like, maybe if you took downtown commercial and used that zoning at the crossing, but I think everybody agreed that doesn't fit.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It just, you know, you got like a nice blend of La Cantina, Jimmy D's, Acapulco buildings that are kind of one, two, three stories.
They'll be all gone. They'll be all gone.
You know, it might, but, I mean, I think...
I know for a fact it will be.
Okay. All of it? La Cantina, too?
No, not La Cantina.
Oh, just Jimmy D's?
Jimmy D's, that, I already know somebody's in the works for that.
Right. Well, I guess then...
Well, they're already in the work.
Well, then, I guess, well, that's actually...
Three stories will be. Well, three levels, one more apartment.
Well, actually, but actually, to that point, I mean, that's actually a really good point, right?
It's good news.
So if it's already going to get raised, and someone's going to buy it, I think we all agree at the EDC and with the chair, the planning board, and others, like, do you want five stories replacing that?
No, I agree.
So this bylaw caps it at three stories, which is...
No, I agree. I agree with you.
Right, yeah. So, I mean, it may, you know, those single-story buildings may go away someday, but look at like a West New, I mean, even any, a lot of neighborhoods, even east of Boston, they're really one, two, and three stories max. So I think that neighborhood, especially with the infrastructure, the parking, the roadways, like, there's not a lot of space. It's a very small, tight neighborhood.
No, I agree, it's just more apartments.
Chairman, it is three stories, and with a footnote, 15, buildings up to 50 feet in height, regardless of the number of stories, may be permitted by a special permit. That's the way it exists right now.
So a special permit 50 feet.
Right.
Just like downtown.
So you're now drawing that down 20 feet, basically.
Exactly. Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add something that, it's not, well, in the Schedule Lot Area, we, of Lot Area frontage setbacks, heights, and everything, so we've restricted it to three stories height, but we do have the setbacks for downtown commercial. Right, so it's like, it's not Commercial One setbacks, which is, right? It's like downtown commercial, and that's what's there now, right? Everybody's close next to each other, and next to the street, right? It's walkable, and, and so that's the, you know, if we, if we grab the downtown commercial setbacks, do we allow for that height as well? And then we said no, because that doesn't fit the neighborhood.
No, it doesn't fit down there.
Yeah. I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not commercial setbacks, Commercial One, it's actually downtown commercial setback.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Chandler?
You, Mr. Chairman. We're almost done. Question through you to, I don't know who this goes to. So, it's only going to be three stories, which is great, because that takes some of the apartments out, but would these buildings down there be more like the one right across from the Getty that has the retail underneath?
Yeah.
A few stories.
Yeah. So that would, that's probably what something like you might, not you personally building, but, okay. So that would be good, because then it wouldn't be whole complexes.
No, it would be good.
Right. And I, I didn't really understand your parking. It's going to be one and a half, or it's going to be one...
Residential will be one per unit.
Okay.
So one parking space required onsite per unit, which is the same as downtown commercial.
Okay.
But the difference between downtown commercial and the Crossing is that the commercial-industrial onsite parking will be required still, because you need, you're going to, because eventually any of those cars, where are they going to go? I think we've discussed, just so folks know, hopefully if the SNET trail comes in, the Children's Museum works out, we're having a meeting with the MBTA in the fall about that lot where the gravel is next to where the Children's Museum's going to be.
Yeah.
At some point, there needs to be some level of parking, either private park, a private lot that's offered to the public, or the public needs to have a lot or somewhere to really take some of that onsite parking issue. So, so it's going to be 500, for every 500 square feet of commercial, it's one space per 500 square feet.
Okay, so for a thousand-square-foot retail store, there's only two spots. Okay, so that's a little tight.
It is, but it's something, and it, and it does matter, in a 1,000-square-foot building, you know, I mean, you may not have the customer traffic that you would in a larger building like...
Right, but there couldn't be a barber or something down there, right?
Right, exactly. Well, there's still street parking, and, you know, so there is still street parking, obviously, and it works out well now. I mean, I know La Cantina's certainly bursting at the seams, because they're popular, but if the SNET trail comes to fruition at some point, you're going to have to probably put parking on the first chunk of that parcel.
Yep.
So right off Union, you're going to have a lot.
That was my question, that's great, yeah, that would really help.
But, you know, that's, that's a long way away. So I, I think we discussed at the EDC, now it's kicking my memory, that if in the next five or 10 years you can get that bill, then you can come back and change the bylaw so that you don't have to have that commercial requirement on some of those small lots.
Yeah.
But we've got to kind of put those pieces together eventually.
Nice job, ECD.
EDC.
EDC, yeah. Thank you.
The key of that, yeah. It was a three-hour meeting.
Okay, any further comments?
Does Amy have her hand up?
No.
She had it. That was... Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To a couple of points that I brought up during the EDC meeting. I was the one who basically said we should allow for the, the parking garages. I did want to stress, because it was a blanket question that came up during the EDC meeting, is whether or not we could put a parking lot anywhere. The goal is not to do that, obviously, I don't want anyone to think that, hey, if we could throw up a parking garage down at the end of the street where Washington Street meets, you know, the intersection, it's like, that's not, the general idea is to at least allow for it, so that in the future, once this net trail expands, and if we do have the opportunity to get that property that's immediately adjacent to the train tracks that are right next to, to the museum, that would make an ideal location, you know, if Allegra, for instance, were taken down, that would allow for parking garages. Now, basically, my idea behind this was the fact that we're ultimately looking to grow this neighborhood, and it would be, it would be prudent to at least allow that opportunity, granted through special permit and through the planning board, if that were an option. I just see so much growth in this neighborhood, but one of the things, and Jamie, I brought this up during the EDC meeting, and this is just to the judge of councils, the whole, it's not really something we can do about it now, but maybe future councils can handle this when it, when it comes down the pike, is the fact that that neighborhood actually got... is the fact that that neighborhood actually got done over some years back, prior to me coming on the council. They put in all the period lighting, they put some investment into the neighborhood to try to bring it up, economic development speaking. The power lines, telephone poles, and none of that stuff ever got relocated. So it zigzags the whole neighborhood and really is unattractive. So maybe if somebody can talk to the state, or if we could come with some future plans to fix all that up, it would truly add value to the neighborhood. That's me talking, isn't it, Trichin, I guess you could say? I don't want the work.
All set, Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine twenty-nine to the planning board, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty, zoning map changes crossing neighborhood zoning district, a zoning bylaw to amend the code of the town of Franklin at chapter one eighty-five, section five, zoning map, referral to the planning board. Clerk will read the zoning bylaw.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Anything to add?
No.
Okay, seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to refer zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty to the planning board. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-one, the crossing zoning use regulations, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter one eighty-five, use regulation schedule, part one through part seven, referral to the planning board.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty to planning board.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Well, there's, there's a bunch, so there's twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
No, thirty-one, we've already done that.
We're on thirty-one.
We're on thirty-one.
We're on thirty-one, I missed one. All right, so thirty-one.
Okay, motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-two, the crossing zoning district, the zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter one eighty-five, schedule of lot area frontage yard and height requirements, referral to the planning board. Clerk will read the zoning bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
All in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Refer, refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-two to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-two to the planning board. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-three, crossing neighborhood zoning district, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter one eighty-five, section twenty-one, parking, loading, and driveway requirements, referral to the planning board.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Refer, refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-three to planning board.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move by, a zoning bylaw amendment nine three, twenty-five dash nine thirty-three to the planning board. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-four, crossing neighborhood, crossing district, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter one eighty-five, sections three, four, twenty, and thirty-one, referral to the planning board.
Motion to waive the reading?
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-four to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Counselor Hamblin.
You're going too fast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, Amy said that she thanked me, I thought it was a good idea, but actually, this town staff did an amazing job, and I just don't want us to just roll over that, okay? So thank you, Amy, and Gus, and Attorney Sorrell, and everybody else that worked really hard for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to refer a zoning bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-four to the planning board. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're down to bylaw amendment twenty-five. Twenty-five dash nine thirty-six. A bylaw to amend the code of the town of Franklin at chapter seventy-three, departmental revolving funds, EV charging stations. This is the second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine forty to a second reading.
Nine thirty-six.
No, nine thirty-six. No, this is the second reading.
This is the second.
Right.
Nine thirty-six. Twenty-five, nine thirty-six.
We just want to move.
So we're just approving.
Just moving. Just move bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine.
Move. I don't have nine thirty-six here. I have nine thirty-eight, nine thirty-nine. So, oh, nine thirty-six.
Second.
Move bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-six.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
M and N are the final two votes that are required to. Oh, shoot.
I think he, oh, he's out of line, so he's fine.
Yeah.
Well, is he?
He's gone.
He's gone.
He's gone.
I'm going to go down the stairs.
Yeah, he's gone, yeah.
He's got an early flight.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, he's gone. No, I, yeah, I know he's gone.
Yeah, he said he's leaving, yeah.
Items M and N are the final votes to set up what's already been approved twice, but the revolving fund for the EV charging stations and the rate at thirty-five cents per kilowatt.
I, I, I have one question about the EV charging census, because I've got like seventeen phone calls down by the high school, people walk through the high school, and on the weekends, people are charging their cars. Are we charging them?
After you take this vote, they will.
We will be.
Okay, good, because that's what they were wondering, because they, you know, I said, well, I don't know, do they town cars? Because I didn't know, and they go, they got Rhode Island plates. Yeah, and they're charging, and I said, wow, okay.
Now, they will.
Now, they will be. Any further, any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-six, a majority roll call votes required. Clerk will call the roll.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Cormier.
Yes.
From Joe's absence.
Paul Agri.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Eight and one absence.
Motion carries. Bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-seven, a bylaw to amend the code of the town of Franklin at chapter eighty-two, fees municipal service, EV charging stations. This is the second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Motion second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, anything?
Question.
Question, Counselor Plagri.
Who's going to be monitoring this?
It's automatic.
It's automatic.
It's all automatic?
The, um.
Charging.
The charging stations?
Yeah. I know nothing about the charging stations.
Oh.
That's why. I'm sure other people don't know either. Give me a brief thing.
Well, you basically, you, if you have an electric vehicle, you park in the space, you put the conduct, you put the, you know, you fill up the tank, you put the charger in, and then you swipe a credit card or your Apple Pay or whatever, and however long you stay, you get charged thirty-five cents per kilowatt. So it's not based on the time, it's based on the usage. So, you know, if you have a car that's chart, needs more charging and needs it faster because you got a Tesla versus some other model, a Bolt, you know, those take an energy at different levels, and so you get charged appropriately for what it is. I just do want to note that some of the charging stations, a couple out here, were funded at one point through grants to National Grid where they have to be open to the public and free, but all the other ones that you're referencing will be on the chargers, and there are some ones that are going out here in the municipal building on the front, probably for another year. Those will be charged, those will be paid. There's very few, but the original chargers, we got like three, four, five, six years ago. We're under a different grant program, and eventually, we're going to have to deal with that with National Grid, but all the other ones are going to have, are going to have pay for charging on. So it's just like reserving a space, Counselor Plagri, up at the Depot Street Lot. Go up to the kiosk, you pay your, pay your fee, and and we put it into the revolving fund, and then the electricity costs for those charging stations get paid out of the people that paid the charger.
And anyone can use these, out-of-town people or whatever? Okay, just double checking.
I mean, I hope for God's sakes that we're not getting people from five towns away. I don't know how they're going to get home, but like, you know, I mean, honestly, I think the.
They said they got Rhode Island plates.
It's always Rhode Island, isn't it? It's never a New Hampshire plate, it's not a Norfolk president, it's always Rhode Island.
Any further, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve bylaw amendment twenty-five dash nine thirty-seven, a majority roll call vote required. Clerk will call the roll.
Cormier.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Plagri.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash fifty-one, acceptance of gifts, senior center sixteen hundred and forty-six dollars, veteran services four hundred dollars, fire department a thousand twenty-five, police department a thousand, recreation AED. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution twenty-five dash fifty-one, acceptance of gifts, senior center, veteran services department, fire department, police department, and rec. department, whereas the Franklin senior center vets, uh, service department, Franklin fire department, Franklin police department, and Franklin rec. department have received generous donations in total amount of four thousand seventy-one dollars and one AED to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Senior center, one thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars, donations to be applied at the discretion of the senior center through the Council on Aging Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Veteran services department, four hundred dollars, municipal veterans assistance fund two fifty, veterans gift fund one fifty, donations to be applied at the discretion of the veteran services department through the municipal veterans assistance fund and veterans gift fund in support of local veterans and their families. Fire department, one thousand twenty-five dollars, donation to be used at the department's discretion towards the purchase of safety and other related equipment and to fund departmental programs. Police department, one thousand dollars, donation to be applied at the discretion of the department through the police gift account towards the support of community policing programs assisting with training needs and for the purchase of essential equipment for offices. And the rec. department, one AED, donation to be used for the rec. department summer camp. Donor information is included in the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now, therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Franklin senior center, veteran services department, Franklin fire department, Franklin police department, and Franklin recreation department gratefully accept these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each of the departments for the purposes noted above. Resolution, the resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-five dash fifty-one.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion, and I think the only discussion is just, thank you to all of these people, companies, and organizations that continue to donate to our seniors, to the veterans, to the fire department, to the police department, many departments. Yes, Jamie?
And Ryan Jetty just wanted to send a special shout-out to First Response Power Watching, Sean Kavanaugh, just stopped by and donated an AED. So I just want to thank Sean for that, like, really unique, you know, incredible donation for summer camp in King Street Memorial Park, so he wrote something up, obviously it was a late night, and he just asked me to send him a shout-out, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash fifty-one, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town administrators report.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to everybody who's watching at home for sticking with us. I actually have a lot of news here. I'm going to go through some highlights. First, I want to give a huge shout-out to Julie McCann in my office and Karen Bratt. Another successful year for our insurance program, where we maxed out a hundred percent of our credits. That saved us fifty-three thousand dollars. So that's a pretty good chunk of money, and quite frankly, that's, that's a job, right? So that's, all of our departments come in here and meet four times a year with our insurance company, and we do trainings and professional development, policy writing, update stuff. It's a lot of coordination, and we've now hit a hundred percent, I think in my ten It's a lot of coordination, and, um, we've now hit a hundred percent, I think in my ten years here, probably five or six times. So, that's a really great accomplishment, and Julie and Karen have taken it over the last couple of years and gotten into a great rhythm with all the staff. The schools participate in that too, by the way. We have representatives from the school department who work with us, and they max out their credits. So, fifty-three thousand dollars in savings off our insurance bill. That's really amazing, so I want to thank them. I want to congratulate Sarah down at the Senior Center for getting a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to replace all of the Senior Center fitness gym equipment. So, that's a huge grant, and I want to thank her for her efforts there. Also, at the Senior Center, um, for, again, for communities like us where people look up to Franklin and our reputation. Kathleen and Amanda Rabbit at the Supportive Day Program actually got invited to the statewide conference on the statewide Council on Agings and statewide Elder Affairs State Agency. They invited our team to come present on Supportive Day Program and how we do things at the Franklin Senior Center. So, that's a really great opportunity in front of like five or six hundred people at a statewide conference to showcase a lot of the great work that we're doing, particularly in social services. Want to congratulate our CFO, Carrie Bertoni. She was appointed this week by her colleagues as the President of the Norfolk County Municipal Finance Offices Association. So, that's a great, that's a great designation for Carrie and her leadership. I do want to let everybody know, Mark, the Town Attorney and I are researching potential avenues for liquor licenses instead of possibly the Town Council doing them like we do them. I think even though there's been disagreement on certain licenses, I think I've heard broad consensus among all nine people that, you know, if there's another alternative on how to handle liquor licenses, we are looking into those, and there are actually some other options. And so, probably for the next session, we're gonna have some available ideas, which I think would save all of you a lot of time and a lot of administrative bureaucracy. Obviously, I wrote you guys an email, um, about local aid, just to give everybody a heads-up. We did get cut, uh, local aid from the state by two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So, those are budget cuts that we're gonna have to make at some point in August. Our team is work, are working with the schools on a couple of different scenarios. But it just goes to show you, and I think hopefully for people listening, and then in August when we have some meetings, you know, we can say that the numbers are gonna be high, but then in the conference report and the governor, they cut almost one billion dollars of what their original state budget proposals were earlier in the year. It's just a sign of what's to come next year. Certainly after the big beautiful bill got passed and the cuts at the federal level, a lot of that responsibility is gonna fall onto the state, and a lot of that pressure is gonna fall into us. So, August eleventh, we anticipate a finance committee meeting to look at those choices and make a recommendation to everybody. And then on August thirteenth, we expect, um, the final budget amendment to go through the council there. And then finally, um, some very bittersweet news, uh, some staff transitions. Number one, a shout-out to Raylene Gallivan, who's been our Social Service Coordinator down at the Senior Center. She has taken a position far closer to her house. Most people don't know that she had a really long commute every day. We're very sad to leave, for her to leave. She was incredibly good at what she did. She worked really with Amy and all the other folks in town, the, um, the, um, the mental health clinicians as part of FCAT with our firefighters and all that stuff. So, we're gonna miss Raylene, but we're gonna wish her the best in her new endeavors. And last but by no means least, very bittersweet, I know we told all of you today, but just for the first public announcement, our deputy town administrator, Amy Fugilietti, is gonna be taking a new position as the Assistant Town Manager for the town of Yarmouth in her new hometown. This is a great opportunity for Amy. As sad as we are, we always are to see folks like Amy and Raylene leave. We are even more happier for them because they are improving their quality of life, work-life balance. And for Amy, for all of you that don't know, um, she is getting married in a couple of months. And she moved to Yarmouth with her family. So, for her, this is a really great move for her career and for her family as she sets out the next chapter in her life. We are just very blessed that she spent three years here in Franklin. As the letter that we sent you earlier outlines a lot of the accomplishments during her tenure. You know, we're gonna miss Amy a tremendous amount. We're sad to see her go, but we are really, really happy for her and her family to start this new chapter in her life. And of course, we wish her nothing but the, uh, the best and all of our love in her, uh, in her new endeavors. So, um, that's my town administrator report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, subcommittee reports. I think the only committee that's met is EDC.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be quick, but it was a long meeting, as Counselor Jones did already mention. But, um, we discussed the crossing neighborhood. We also got an update on World Cup preparations from Amy and Cory. They got a lot of really good things going on. We also put together a list of our priorities moving forward. And we had a long discussion about the removal of use variances from the ZBA. And I think it, it's important to mention, just so it gets in the record, if anybody's watches this in the next like twenty days, I don't think anybody's watching it right now, because it's kind of late. You know, we, we just, people have been talking about it, they're really, they've been pretty upset about why do we allow for use, use variances? So, we thought we'd talk about, like, should we take it away from the ZBA? So, what is a use variance? So, like, if you, if you had a property in a certain zoning district that you wanted to do something with it that the use table doesn't allow, then you would have to go to the ZBA for a use variance, right? So, it would be something like, um, if you wanted to put a neighborhood store in a residential area, or if you wanted to put some residents, resident in a commercial area, things like that. But I think we agreed But we agreed, I think we agreed on a whole, there was a, there was a long, long discussion about it. But until the zoning and the use tables are updated to follow the recommendations in the master plan, then we, we would lose too many possibilities to remove the use variances from the ZBA. And so, we, um, but we did have a really good discussion about it. If anybody wants to go listen to it, it was last week's EDC meeting. And so, then you can, you can understand how complex it is. But, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Okay, I, I don't believe there was any other committee, uh, that met. So, future agenda items. Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. Jamie, can we, at a future meeting, get an update on Scott Carruthers and the VFW request for the clothing bin? He's, he's asked me several times, and I haven't been able to give him the update that he, that he needs. So, maybe that can just be on an agenda, or perhaps just you can comment on it in your, in your comments at a future meeting. And the, the second thing for a future meeting, um, I don't know if everybody's been over to Beaver, uh, but and I know we had to make some tough budget decisions, and I know that the DPW had to let go of the kids for trash, but the beach is in pretty rough shape, and the trash over there is completely unacceptable. The community still has to be someplace that we all live and feel proud of and want to bring our kids to. So, I'm wondering, in light of that, can we consider maybe a fee to use Beaver? You know, like many state parks and even national parks charge to, like a season pass, or they charge at the gate to park. And, and maybe that money could then in turn pay for better trash collection. Just something to think about that I think would help. I, I talked to Brutus a little bit, and he said, you know, we already do like a once-a-week trash pickup from the receptacles that are at the bathrooms, but clearly with the heat that we're having, it's just not enough, and things are overrun over there. So, if that could just be considered, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier Ledger. Counselor Chandler.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Poligree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna bring it up too about the trash deal. You know, as far as things just getting so messy, along with the lawns that are not being cut. And I want to ask residents of Franklin if they would help and step forward. And if there's a section in front of their house, or if they're, this is for lawn mowing, in front of their house, or as with us, we have a, um, pump station across the street from us. And my husband was gonna go with the mower, you know, when he does our lawn and go over there. But believe it or not, the next day it was done. And I think that perhaps it's someone from Monterey and that that's coming down and do it, and I think that's wonderful. If we can get some people to step in that way and help us out, it would be wonderful. Stop and think how many, um, grass strips are in front of your house? Take care of it. For goodness sakes, it only takes five minutes more to do it, one run through. So, um, I, I'm begging people. I know I'm gonna be inundated with phone calls or texts tomorrow saying, I think more about the lawn in town. But I do, because when people come into town, I don't want them to see a mess. And I had a problem with the four-ninety-five exits, but they just have that. Yeah, but no, I know it isn't us, but we did call one time and tell them that it was a mess over there, and they came out, and now it is, it is mowed over there. So, I mean, just everyone, step up. Don't do all this bitching and complaining on Facebook. Step up and help out with the trash and with the lawns. Keep Franklin beautiful.
Thank you, Counselor Poligree. Future agenda items. Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Hamblin.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Jones.
No, sir.
Counselor Delarco. Counselor comments.
Oh, how come you didn't stop me?
Ah, you were on a, you were on a roll. I'm gonna pass over you this time. Counselor Sheridan.
I just congratulate Amy.
Thank you. Counselor Hamblin.
I would like to congratulate all the staff that had those wonderful accomplishments. And, um, Raylan and Amy, well, I, I will miss, miss Amy. I don't really know Raylene that much, but I, but I've heard that she does wonderful work, and everyone's gonna miss her, and I will really miss Amy, but I'm happy for her as well. And see you in August.
Thank you. Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congrats, Amy. We are certainly gonna miss you, and congrats, Raylene. I did have some interactions with her, with my own family, and she's, she's wonderful. Couple of things. I've often complained about businesses not stepping up, and I want to be the first to say thank you to BJ's because their foundation awarded, uh, several hundred thousand dollars in grants to our own Franklin Food Pantry for them to be able to buy a refrigerated truck and two commercial cooling units. So, we can, you know, we, we complain a lot about the, the big box stores not doing enough, but they stepped up, and, um, from what I understand, even met with members of the Franklin Food Pantry Board and asked, how can we do more to help you? So, I think that's fantastic. I want to take a moment and thank the Fourth of July Volunteer Committee. Seems like that was forever ago, but we haven't met, to say thank you for an incredible festival and fireworks show, and that's no small feat to put that on. So, um, thank you to all of those people. I think it was mentioned earlier in the comments, I just wanted it to be corrected. Mr. Schmidt didn't make a twenty-six-hundred-dollar gift to the town. I believe it was twenty-six thousand that we're considering in August. So, that should just be fixed in the, in the notes. And thank you to the two teachers who spoke like five hours ago about the SRO cuts. I one-hundred percent agree that, I, I wish circumstances were different, that those, um, people weren't cut. Perhaps there's a way to see if the school department can maneuver some money to help us with those positions. But as of right now, I don't see a path forward for us, but I do one-hundred percent agree that those positions are gonna be very, very missed. And with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier Ledger. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We'll miss you, Amy. You, uh, can laugh at the World Cup when it's going on and you're down. But, um
She'll be in the stadium.
She'll be. And maybe, uh, the summer help would have left on September first, so maybe we'll get the barrels back then. We'll see. It's a thought. Lastly, Counselor Delarco, five more meetings?
It's it, brother.
One more meetings. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Poligree.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Counselor Sheridan.
I already went.
You already went. You're already done. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most has been said. I do, I do, um, feel bad about the teachers and the SROs and being able to have their presence at the schools, and I do agree with them. Counselor Cormier Ledger, if there is some means and ways for us to make things work, then we'd be keen. All the points that were said over three hours ago are valid. Amy, I said it earlier, I'll say it again, I'm gonna miss you. You really, you know, you've done so much for us in the short time that you've been here. You really helped offset Jamie, and you've helped take a lot off, off of his plate, as well as support us. And, and I know you're gonna do a great job down in Yarmouth, and I'm gonna miss you. Best of luck with your doing. Congratulations on your marriage. I know it's gonna go well, your engagement. It's all exciting stuff. On the other note, to Counselor Poligree, I'll have you know, I weed-whack Davis Thayer.
Good going.
I literally weed-whack the whole perimeter of the Davis Thayer Elementary School, including school street.
Did anybody take your weed-whacker once?
Huh? Yes, someone's told me to weed-whack in front of my house. Yes, that's true, as a matter of fact. That's one of my favorite tools. But I'm the one who cleans up the neighborhood around the Davis Thayer, so. Because the one thing they do do, and again, this is no insult to DPW, is they mow, but they don't weed-whack. So, they let, they let the growth go out of the hand over there. But anyways.
Why should they? You're doing it.
I know. I was joking with the Start charging, start charging electrician's rates. Don't I send, don't I send those to Mercer Lane?
Yeah, absolutely. All set, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco.
Thank you. Amy, we will miss you, and, and best of luck on me. I really appreciate that. And, uh, if you want to talk about garbage, come with me and walk the picket line up in P. Butters.
Yeah.
See God.
Oh, Jesus. Public address shipped out for the weeks.
Sure. Okay, uh, just a couple of quick things. I want to, I want to thank everybody. I know it was a very lengthy meeting.
Yeah, you owe us.
There was a lot of stuff covered. I appreciate the fact that the council, uh, agreed to the six o'clock start for the July meeting and the August meeting.
Oh, August too.
August two at six o'clock. Hopefully, it, we'll try and make it a little shorter than this evening's, but, uh, no promises. Lots of things on the agendas. Thank you to everybody who came this evening, who watched. Amy, uh, thank you so much for all you've done, uh, and all you'll do in the next month or two. But congratulations, and, uh, best wishes, certainly. And, uh, one last, thank you once again to Bobby and Melanie for driving up from the Cape during vacation time. May greatly appreciate it. We'd be here till two o'clock in the morning if we had to do roll call votes, so, thank you. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion